Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 26, 2014, North Idaho College Board of Trustees Meeting. As we normally do, would you please all rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The next item on the agenda is to verify a quorum. All the trustees are present, and so the quorum is verified. We have no specific guests to introduce tonight, other than those that are on the agenda or have signed up for public comment, and I'll let them introduce themselves. Next item is to review the minutes. Are there any changes, additions, or modifications to the minutes? If not, then they are accepted as presented. The next item on our agenda is the public comment, part of our agenda. There are a number of you who have signed up for public comment, and we welcome you and thank you very much for attending and agreeing to sign up and address the Board of Trustees. As you may or may not have had an opportunity when you signed up to read, but at the top, our policy on public comment is as follows: Public comment is allowed at the discretion of the board chair in accordance with Board Policy 2.01.03, and will be heard only on matters on the meeting agenda. Individuals desiring to be heard on the agenda items must sign up in advance and list the specific agenda item to be addressed. Any comments or concerns must be made in a respectful manner and must relate to the agenda topic. Comments should not address other subjects, and all comment is limited to two minutes. That seems like an awful short time, I'm sure, for those of you who have come and have much to say to us, but I would like very much to make sure that everybody has an opportunity, an equal opportunity, to speak and present to the board. So, we're going to kind of rigidly, because we have a number of people who have signed up, adhere to the two-minute rule. And I've asked Mark Lyons to sort of be our timekeeper, and he's got cards one, two, and three. When you're on one and two, you're in good shape. If he holds up three, then I might have to use the gavel, and I don't want to do that. I really, we really do want to hear from you and appreciate your being here. So, our first, the first individual on the list who has signed up is Roger Stewart, who is going to speak on athletics. Roger, right up to the podium, Roger, and thank you very much.
That was quick.
You didn't realize you were going to be first, huh?
No. A few weeks ago, I'm Roger Stewart. I'm the vice president of the North Idaho College Athletics Booster Club. And a few weeks ago, NIC men's basketball coach spoke in a very passionate way to the Booster Club about the importance of family, the culture of North Idaho College, and I happened to agree with that sentiment. Through the years, we've had many young student athletes that have come through these halls that have made great contributions to the world, not just the community, but to the world. People like Winston Brooks, who came here from the streets of Baltimore and through here on the way to Gonzaga and then became a local law enforcement officer. And Kay Hill, who came here because of the Science and Athletic Program, ended up at the University of Minnesota and is a doctor at the Mayo Clinic. People like Al Williams and Pat Whitcomb, who came here from Chicago and from Michigan, who would have never come here if it weren't for the attraction and the national image of athletics at North Idaho College. They've brought a level of cultural diversity to this community, not just the school, but to the community. But like most families, budget strains have affected us greatly in recent years. We're already being, as an athletic department, we're already being constrained by changes in grant and aids and scholarships, limiting our ability to compete. Other programs are finding it difficult to come here just because of remote locations, upper-level programs that cause us not to play All-Star teams in some sports. Several options that have been presented to us, one that we'd most like to see would be at least to maintain our current level of funding for the programs. It's still, if not the lowest, one of the lowest-funded athletic programs in the Scenic West Athletic Conference. Our Booster Club currently raises over $100,000 a year to contribute, just to essential things like housing for our student athletes. When thinking about family culture, another option would be to cut programs. If we cut programs, we're effectively changing the lives of dozens of our student athletes within our school. That's not something that we want to do. The final option that we've been given, that we happen to agree with, is the opportunity provided this week by the NWAAC to move our athletic programs in a phased manner into a more northwest regional format. The NIC Booster Club voted at its last regularly-scheduled meeting without dissent to endorse this plan that's currently been proposed by the Athletic Department to the board. Would not be our first choice, but it seems to be the most viable choice, and it's a choice that, if you take that into consideration and approve it, it allows our family to stay whole, and that's what we're attempting to do.
Roger, thank you very much for those comments. The next individual to sign up is Benaya Chevers on constituent reports, but I think, Benaya, you're going to put that in your, any comments that you have in your ASNC report?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because the constituent reports is not under new or old business, so it wouldn't be a proper topic here. James Durham, Durham, excuse me. James, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. I am James Durham. I am a student senator here with ASNC, and with this conference change come up, we kind of got a briefing on what was going on, and one of the things that I know was my concern kind of going into this was that there seems to be a rift, and I noticed it when I first got to the college, between athletics and regular, I guess if you want to call them that, regular academic students. And in this change for the conference, I feel like this will create a unique perspective, or create a unique opportunity, especially having the games more local, or at least within two or three hours' drive, where it'll allow for families, as well as friends, to be able to be at the games. One of the problems with, in my opinion, with the games as of now, is that we don't really get to hear a lot about them, and while it is great to know that we have national champions, especially with the wrestling and other sports getting very far in those leagues, we don't ever get to really interact with them, and that, to me, seems like a travesty. So, taking the option of getting into the NWAAC league or the, it feels like it's the most financially responsible alternative, as well as I feel like it will also help to foster a more whole community for the school at large. There's several programs which are also being able to affect more of the student body on a lot less of the budget that we're talking about, even getting cut from the athletics, and it's understandable, and we certainly empathize with the students that that will affect, but at the same time, the budget restraints being what they are, we have to find out an alternative option, and I do feel that this is the best alternative.
James, thank you very much for your comments. The next individual on the list is Ken Thompson. Ken?
Well, I'm Ken Thompson. I'm the men's soccer coach here, and, you know, given this choice, you know, move into the NWAAC or eliminate programs, I certainly support the move to the NWAAC for the entire department. As a coach, you know, I look at this from the perspective of what I'm trying to teach my players, and, you know, whether it's a fundraiser, or giving it everything you have in practice, or getting it done in the classroom, it's very hard for me to ask my players to sacrifice and go into a staff meeting and say, "I'm not willing to sacrifice for the other coaches in that room." So, from that perspective, you know, just as the person I want my young men to become, that's the first point of view where I would support the move to the NWAAC. My second point is as a member of the local soccer community. The soccer community has a reputation for being involved, focused, maybe a little bit intense, and sometimes known for taking itself too seriously, but what I see is a very enthusiastic group of people that love the game of soccer, that are very excited about the opportunities for their kids, and there are two guys in the MLS now, Major League Soccer, that are from Idaho. It doesn't seem like a coincidence to me that the first year we have 12 Idahoans on our team, we've actually gotten votes to be in the top 20 in the country, and, you know, maybe it's a sacrifice to not have the possibility of going for a national title, but there's still the possibility of achieving a national reputation. Certainly, Peninsula College has done that in the NWAAC, and I think that's a possibility for us. The third point of view I look at this from is as the point of view of a coach that's got to start recruiting based on the NWAAC rules. So, as we know, scholarship allotments are different, and there's this concept of athletic work-study. So, whether you're a business owner, or someone that's in charge of a college, or a youth sports organization, everybody talks about community engagement. We've got one guy volunteering right now at the Human Rights Education Institute, and finding ways to maybe employ those kids or give them scholarships if they give themselves to those other organizations. I see a world of possibility there for creating opportunities for those kids, developing young men, and getting the community more engaged with the college. So, from those three points of view, I think this, you know, maybe not the most desirable move, but could give us the incentive to explore some of those other opportunities. So, thank you.
Ken, thank you very much for your comments. Charlie Miller.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name's Charlie Miller. Twelve years ago, I was actually standing at this same spot imploring the Board of Trustees to consider the same decision when the cross-country and track teams were on the chopping block. I think this move to the NWAAC makes fiscal sense. I foresee, and I'll implore, an opportunity with this to bring back these sports that have been cut in the past, you know, that I think, right now, I hate to imagine you guys cutting more sports. I'm going through those same emotions I felt 12 years ago when my program was on the chopping block. I can't imagine some of these student athletes here today that could be facing that same situation. So, the bottom line is, I believe it's a fiscal choice that makes sense, it provides opportunities to local students, and we can potentially expand the depth of sports that we can provide to student athletes in this community. Thank you.
Charlie, thank you very much for your comments also. Lewis Watkins, you're up next.
Thank you very much for allowing the opportunity to be able to speak, and like Charlie, he was one of my former student athletes, and I was the track and cross-country coach at that time, back in 2002. And what I want to speak to is, I realize that this is an emotionally-charged issue, dealing on both sides. We felt it back then. I never felt it more than what I had gone through, and like Charlie said, I've got emotions coming up right now that are similar to what I experienced back then, but what I want to speak to is that, what we talked about at that time as an athletic department, we talked about, you know, through the Athletic Review Committee, that it really comes down, you have four options, and through all our constituent groups that actually talked about it, is that, number one, you can stay with the SWAC right now, as far as the NJCAA affiliation, and continue to fuel the rising cost of travel, you know, traveling down to Colorado and Arizona, and what it does, and we all felt that even at that time. I mean, I took 33 athletes to Nationals that year. I knew what it was like to spend over, you know, nearly $40,000 to send a team to Nationals, and the impact that it had on the college. At that time, I said, if anything, I would, if we stayed, want to go with the NWAAC, just because it didn't seem financially prudent to go ahead and stay in that affiliation. The second option would be to go ahead and do away with athletics, and nobody in this room, I think, right now feels that's an option, that what it does for the community college and what it does as far as showcasing who we're about and what we're about is invaluable. The third option would be to, you know, stay in the SWAC and the NJCAA, and then face the same budget cuts that we faced back then. And there has never been a time in my life which was more frustrating and more disheartening than to look at my 75-plus athletes and not have an answer for why they were cut at that time, to remove opportunity from student athletes who contributed so much to the college community and the greater community as a whole, and we all felt that. We saw over a third of our athletic department go away, and I still deal with that, you know, and I didn't realize how much until just today. The fourth option, which just seems the most viable and what we were all advocating for, was to move the NWAAC. Not only do we keep all programs, but also the opportunities that exist, and maybe even bring our programs back to where they were in 2002, much similar to the community colleges of Spokane, Southwestern Oregon Community College, as well as Clackamas. So, thank you very much.
Lewis, thank you very much for your comments. Brittany Born is next. Brittany?
I play for a North Idaho college golf team last semester, and I want to say is that if we go regional, we will lose national recognition. You know how many students have came here that come from different countries, came from Australia, UK? How many opportunities do we get that as a college? You know how hard that this college has got to that national potential? We have athletes that are playing at D1 level. I have a golf mate who's shooting in the 70s and 60s, which, if we went to a regional level, that would not be possible, because they would probably be shooting in the 90s or 80s. And also, I became friends with these international kids. It's kind of hard to see all these kids being pushed away. And future athletes, future athletes for the school. You know how many athletes would go, come here if we did not go national level? That will destroy the potential for future athletes to come to this school, because we went regional, not national. Like, go to Florida, we can take it there, and they will hear us roar as a North Idaho College Cardinals. They could basically get everything as we can, and that's it.
Brittany, thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker is Don Saucer.
Thank you, board, for allowing us to talk. I've been hanging around this college about 38 years now. I'm not sure why, but, well, I do know why, because it's a great place, and many people don't realize that. As far as this conference change, I think it's a bad move, and I understand budgets. I was up there with you guys for a while, and, but I know the president talked about a general cut. Everybody has to feel the pain, and that sounds pretty good, except it affects different departments different ways. I can figure like a custodial department or something. They get cut, they might have to lay off a person or two, and everybody else has to work a little harder. But with the athletics here, when we change conference, that's it. There's very little chance we could ever get back if the college wanted to. So, that's a major difference between many of the cuts. And I think also we'll lose a lot of community support. I'm measuring how much I'm going to lose now, because I have a lot less interest in the college if this takes place. Thank you.
Don, thank you very much for your comments. The next individual who's signed up is Jack McNeil. Jack?
I had a prepared talk to give with all kinds of suggestions, but I can't do it in two minutes. So, let me just say that I'm totally opposed to it. I've been involved in this program from the 60s. We've been a host family for numerous kids, many international students. That's all gone. You can't have that in the NWAAC. I think a lot of problems are within the, I don't even know how to phrase it. I'm trying to skip around here. I can't begin to go through five minutes and two minutes, but at the Booster Club meeting yesterday, some of the coaches talked about the grant and aid program, and felt that the way it's handled is not giving credit to the athletic department, and it should be revised to account for that. In talking with Pat Whitcomb is an example in a different situation, but he pointed out that last year he had 60 wrestlers, 13 of them were on, oh, 53 wrestlers, I think it was, 13 were on partial grants and aid, the other 40, anyway, there's 40 of them that were not on any financial aid at all. He figured that the amount of money brought into the college by those 40 athletes who were not listed as athletes, but they came here because of athletics, hoping to make the wrestling team and didn't, represented $300,000 in tuition alone, represented a contribution to the community of about $1 million, and you can talk to Pat, he's got better numbers than I do on this. That doesn't come back to credit to the athletic department, even though those students are here because of athletics contributing fully to this program. I think that should be considered. I think a grant and aid thing, between the two of them, you're looking at probably $600,000 or $700,000. I don't know. I don't have those kind of figures. But anyway, it's a major, a major amount of money. Skipping through this, I'm going to just use one other thing, comparing increase in athletics to increase in student fees, if I can find the right page. In 2003, between 2003 and 2012, which is the last year I had numbers, the athletic budget went from $1.3 million to $2.1 million, which is an increase of 62 percent. Student fees between 2003 and today, which is a couple of years longer, went from, I don't know, it went from $2,500 a year, this is considering all costs to the student, room and board, tuition, et cetera, went from $2,500 to this year, $12,300. That's a 483 percent increase compared to the 60 percent that's going to athletics. I question whether maybe we're not looking at the wrong budget. Maybe there's some other places we ought to be cutting to help finance athletics to a higher degree. I've got a lot more to talk about, but I don't have much time, so I'm just going to let it go there. Pardon me, I've got a drippy nose. Anyway, thank you for the chance, at least, to be here and talk to you briefly.
Jack, thank you very much for your comments. Martin Gould.
First of all, I had no intention of coming up here and speaking, up here. I'm actually here to support the current program, athletics as it sits. I know that there's changes that need to be made, and it's not easy, but it seems like this alternative has been presented to us as a public very quickly. I don't get to go behind the scenes at meetings and all that stuff, but this was, the first I heard about was in the paper. My wife and I have been involved in the basketball program for the last five years. I think we've missed maybe three home games. We're a host family, too, and we've been able to bring these kids as host parents into our house, introduce them to our kids. Some of them have lived with us, and, you know, it'd be a shame if that went away. I think it's been a benefit to us and the community for our kids to be around people that they normally, you know, don't get to hang out with.
Martin, could you speak up just a little bit? It's probably me having a difficult time hearing you, but I would like to hear what you have to say, and I can't.
I appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to mention was that I don't think anyone in the community would be excited about coming and viewing a watered-down athletic program, and that's exactly what we'd be facing. We already have representation of the SWAC in Spokane, and the average attendance at their basketball games is, somebody checked on it the other day, was about 50, 50 people come to watch, and that's a town of a quarter million. We get, what, three, four times that at our games, at least, and as far as the accessibility of students, I don't know why you, that you guys haven't been able to make friends with some of the athletes here. They're great guys. They are here. They do play a lot of home games. I don't know how many you go to, but we have several here that, you know, home games that you can go to if you want. So, to say that they're off somewhere else, or somewhere where you couldn't see them play, I don't think that's necessarily accurate. And I was going to say that, because we have representation of the NWAAC athletics in Spokane, I don't think you could pull any people between Spokane high schools, athletes, that would say that they would love to go play for an NWAAC program if they had the opportunity to play for an NJCAA program instead. That's a silver medal, and that's what we'd be offering. This is a much higher level of competition, nationally recognized, and for them to be able to go play in a gym full of 50 people would be, you know, an insult to them. They could strive to come and play here, which several of them do, you know, and we provide that opportunity to them. So, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Martin. Carol Lindsay?
Welcome the opportunity to be able to speak tonight. My name's Carol Lindsay. I've been an employee at NIC for 28 years, including two years as an assistant volleyball coach. We are at the, at a fiscal crossroads for athletics, where we're faced with the extremely painful and difficult decision of either changing conference membership or cutting existing sport programs, and I know this is a highly emotionally-charged topic and a difficult decision for you to make as a board. This is not a new concern. In 2002, 2003, I co-chaired the Athletic Review Committee, which conducted a thorough review of athletics at NIC over a period of seven months. The ARC voted 12 to 9 in favor of switching to the NWAAC. The board at that time did not support this recommendation. In looking at the issue of conference membership, there are several primary arguments: opportunities for students, the ability to compete at the national level, and the overall cost to the college. In regards to opportunities for students, students in both SWAC and NWAAC have significant opportunities to play at the four-year level. Last year, literally hundreds of student athletes from NWAAC went on to play at a variety of four-year schools, including Cornell, the University of Oregon, University of Kentucky, and Texas A&amp;M. My point is that NWAAC is a strongly competitive league. Opportunities to play at the four-year level and beyond are not diminished by affiliation with NWAAC. Play at the national level and fiscal implications. The biggest argument to stay in SWAC is the opportunity for athletic participation at the national level. While this is true, this is not available in the NWAAC, what we have to ask is at what cost is this privilege in SWAC, and is it fiscally sound and prudent? In 2013, athletics generated a total of $427,000 in revenue. This included $8,500 in gate receipts, $320,500 in student fees, and a $93,500 Booster Club contribution. The general fund contributed $1,042,000 for a total revenue of $1,404,000. Note that the general fund contribution represented 71 percent of all revenues. The expenses were $2.12 million, leaving a deficit of $655,000 that represented grant and aid. When you add the general fund contribution, the difference between revenue and expenses jumped to a $1.6 million deficit. This figure reflects a 70 percent increase in athletics in their budget since 2003. Switching to NWAAC is estimated to save minimally over $600,000. NWAAC affiliation represents the most prudent use of taxpayer dollars and a commitment to responsible stewardship of public funds while maintaining optimal opportunities for student athletes. I urge you, the board, to look carefully at the resources you have available to make this decision. That includes this big, giant packet, if you don't already have it, the Athletic Review Committee recommendations from 2003, as well as some wonderful figures from Sarah Garcia, who, and the business office, which has done exceptional accounting. I also would urge you to act with reason and not with emotion, and encourage you to act on this in a timely manner. Cut sports or change leagues, the decision is yours to make.
Carol, thank you very much for your comments also. Our last individual signing up for public comment is Gain Clifford.
Good evening, Chairman Howard, members of the board, President Dunlap. I, too, was a member of the Athletic Review Committee oh so long ago that looked at all these proposals, and all of the comments I've heard... And all of the comments I've heard opposing the switch in com, in conference affiliation were addressed by the committee at that point in time. It got very emotional. We had many public hearings where members of the community were invited to come before the committee and, and air their concerns about the conference affiliation and everything else. But when you boil it down, all of these comments were based on a motion. I look at it from, from the other side. I look at it as a division chair that has to schedule classes, that has to take a look at declining budgets, reduced number of adjunct faculty, reduced number of positions, reduced number of, of, of resources available to me as a manager of those resources as a division chair to provide my students the opportunity to take part in their classes. And for the last three semesters, I've had a ten percent reduction in my budget that I've had to go through. That means I've had to eliminate faculty, adjunct faculty, I've had to cut back on my operations and maintenance expenses that I have to deal with, and it, it puts, it puts us, division chairs that manage those resources, in a very awkward position. We have to look at the students when they come in and say, "Why can't you offer a section at this time?" Well, the reason I can't offer a section at this time is I've been told for the last three semesters to cut seven to ten percent of my budget, and I can't hire as many adjunct faculty as I used to be able to. I have a couple of the courses that are core courses for graduation from NIC, computer literacy course. Three years ago, I had fifteen sections of computer literacy that I used to be able to teach. Now, with the reduction in, the decline in enrollment and the reduction in my resources available to me, this next semester, I'll have eight. That means those students have less sections that they're able to sign up for. And the critical part of that is when you have less sections, you give students less opportunity to set their schedules, because those students are just not signing up for my classes, they're signing up for English, they're signing up for math, they're signing up for their social sciences. And if we're all trying to crowd less sections in the same amount of time, the students can't graduate on time. Now, we had a committee that looked at it, it's the largest committee that I've ever been associated with in my time at, at NIC. We had members of the community, the athletic department, we had alumni association, we had faculty, we had staff, we had administrators, and we looked at this for over eight months. And in the process of studying this, it was just so obvious that we come to the conclusion that the conference affiliation switch at that time was the best thing for the students, the best thing for the college. And I, I urge you not to, not to prolong this any longer and make this recommend, accept President Burke, or President, President Burke, where did that come from?
It's going back a ways.
Wherever you are. President Dunlap's recommendation. It shows how long I've been around here. Thank you very much.
Gain, thank you very much for your comments. And I again want to thank all of the citizens who came forward and made comments this evening. These public comments are important to this board in terms of part of the information that we need and we ask for in order to help us deal with our decisions. So we do appreciate all of the comments that were made here this evening, and thank you. Then, we, understanding that this was going to be a, a topic of some maybe lengthy discussion tonight, we've kind of tipped the agenda around a little bit this evening so we could get to this topic fairly quickly. But before we do that, we're going to go through a few matters. First, tab three on new business, it's the revised committee policy two point oh three point oh one, and Mark Browning and Dunlap, okay. Also, the elimination of the loyalty oath, three point oh two point one three.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, President Dunlap, and Mr. Lyons, and the assembled masses, my goodness, it's nice to have some folks here this evening, I think. It'll be a lot nicer when I'm done. Charges given to us by the President earlier this year at, at the start of the academic year, as members of the President's Cabinet, to go through each one of the policies and procedures that, that help govern the operations and the day-to-day comings and goings on this college campus. One of the policies that was assigned to me is policy two point zero three point oh one, which is the policy governing committees. You'll see those materials in front of you, the revisions that have been put in place in front of you go through the definitions of what are the natures of the committees, which are a very important part of, of how the shared and participatory governance model works here at NIC. You'll see on page one, there is the new definition for what is a standing committee, meaning that these are committees with ongoing charges, with ongoing responsibilities, ad hoc committees that are brought on to address certain topics that are timely and necessary, but then have a, a finite lifespan. Those ad hoc committees are then, for example, a search committee, as we currently have going for the Vice President of Finance and Business Affairs. That is an ad, that is a, a committee that has a finite lifespan. And then constituent group committees, as you see, we have our constituent groups that are here that, that we participate with on an ongoing basis. So those are the definitions in front of you, Mr. President, members of, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to attempt an answer.
Are there any questions from the board? Yes, Todd.
Mark, on page two, I noticed the addition in red where it says, "Ad hoc committees are formed at the discretion of the college president." Would it be appropriate to have an additional sentence that says, "Or at the discretion of the trustees," or something? Because I, I'm thinking like of the Activity Event Center, when the Board of Trustees as a group tasked President Dunlap to set up that ad hoc committee to, to research that and look at the feasibility of it. So there's a direction that can come from us to establish an ad hoc committee, in addition to maybe something that, you know, President Dunlap may comprise on his own for whatever need needs to be met.
Mr. Chairman, Trustee Banducci, good suggestion. I think you've got that mechanism in place with the example you just gave. You, as a Board of Trustees, felt collectively you needed more input, you needed a group to work on that, you assigned your employee, the President, the President works for you as the five trustees, to go inform that committee. If you were to put in language that would say, "Or at the discretion of the Board of Trustees," you in essence would be eroding some of the authority that you've given to your President to do his job. So if you don't like the committee that he's formed, or you want him to do different, I think you can, you have that mechanism now where you can give him input, certainly to change that, but otherwise you're just leapfrogging over him.
Yeah, and let me make a comment, just so that we understand the process here. This is a, these are proposals that have been made after they've been passed through the Senate and the faculty and the, the administration, this is the first reading. So Todd, if your suggestion may be a good suggestion, the way to deal with it would be for, on the, either the first reading or the second reading, to make a motion to amend it, get a second, and then we would be able to do that, because it's now in the laps of the, in the hands of the trustees in order to either accept it or modify it and change it in some way or reject it.
Because, Mark, you did make a good point. One of the things we had talked about as a, as a board with President Dunlap was how we refine or define the tasking and, and how much, what level of instruction went with that or specificity as to composition of the committee or how it was to move forward and so, okay.
Any other questions or comments? And that takes care of both of the policies, two point oh three point oh one and three point oh two point one three. Let's move on to tab four, which is the first reading of the credit hour policy, four point oh two, and just.
Well, I have a question.
Sorry, go ahead.
Tab three, for those that are wondering, what was the loyalty oath? Can you read it or say what it was? I'm kind of curious on that a little bit more, I, I haven't been able to find it.
Mr. Chair, with your permission, I'll read from policy three point oh two one three, loyalty oath. No loyalty oath shall be required of any North Idaho College employee.
What was it? I mean, what are we eliminating? Was there a, we just solved a problem that didn't exist? I'm, I'm trying to understand where this came from. Did I miss the loyalty oath? I don't remember giving one myself, so as a trustee.
Yeah, I, I, I think the, the intent here is to get rid of a, a policy that doesn't have any application, because we don't have any loyalty oath.
Okay. That was a useless law. There we go. Take off the books, okay.
Thank you. Larry?
Couldn't find it. I'm like, where is the loyalty oath to get rid of?
Chairman Howard, members of the board, President Dunlap, Mr. Lyon, I'm happy to speak briefly to a policy that's been outlined for you by Vice President Burns, who is in Boise this evening. This policy is proposed to ensure that North Idaho College complies with Department of Education regulations as required by the Northwest Commission of Colleges and Universities. The language in this policy really mirrors what exists in the code of federal, federal regulations for credit hour. Some of the impetus for this policy was that regional accrediting agencies were inconsistently regulating credit, and a particular concern were some institutions that had virtually no control over the award of credit, so that individuals could get federal financial aid and really not do the appropriate work. So this policy just restates what the institution has been doing for a number of years and formalizes that. I would also like to add briefly that in the definition of credit hour under one B, there's a reference to a different amount of time. So if we are offering credit in the summer session, for example, that is not under a normal fifteen or sixteen-week semester, then this policy gives us allowance to ensure that students are doing the appropriate amount of work to be awarded that credit. And the policy also incorporates the ability to recognize different modes of instruction. We don't have just simply a lecture setting, we have laboratory settings, we have internships, we have other ways to help account that students are doing the appropriate amount of work in order to be awarded credit. I'd certainly be happy to try to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions, Larry, at this time?
Thank you. In looking through the policy, and you highlighted that this would bring us in alignment with federal and state sorts of things, does this also bring us in line, or bring us in line with our fellow institutions here in the state of Idaho for students who can expect, by following this, they can expect that to be the case at all our other institutions in the state?
This, this is very consistent with institutions across the country. So yes, within the state and across the country.
Especially the state, for the transfer.
Yes, absolutely.
Recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Larry, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could make a motion, I would request that the board approve policy number five point zero four point zero seven.
Five point zero four point zero seven, is that on the agenda?
My other one? I want to approve the one that Larry just talked about.
It's a first reading, yeah.
Oh, it's a first reading?
It's a first reading, yeah.
I, I apologize, I thought it, it says second reading.
No.
Tab four, tab four. Are you on the?
All right, I'm.
Agenda?
Can we rewind that tape?
Delete.
All right. I, I remove my motion.
All right. That's all right, you didn't get a second to any.
All right. Nobody wants to, nobody wants to join me.
Our next item on the agenda is tab five, which is proposal for temporary CTE facilities at the Workshop Training Center, and Mike Myers. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members, President Dunlap. I'd like to start by, it's a, a, a kind of a, I'm going back over the review. We already had a presentation, and that presentation was by Bruce Seer from Jacklin Company, and I want to thank them for being very generous with their presentation and their offer to house our welding program. And our welding program for the audience is, our lease is up and we have to move. So I have tonight a different proposal, and I'd like to also offer that up for consideration. Do we have the slides?
On the left.
Sorry?
On the left.
Oh, okay. Let's see. Oh, in the folder, oh, I see, got you. Yeah, let's.
Slide it down, Mike.
Yeah, I got it. Okay. What I'd like to address today is a proposal, as many people know, our welding program, our lease does expire, and because of that, we'll be moving or having to move as of the date you see on the screen. So we're looking to, at some proposal. Again, Jacklin Seed has made a very, or Jacklin has made a very nice proposal to look at the Jacklin Seed location as one. This is a different proposal, and this proposal is addressing that need to move that welding program, as well as some needs that a lot of people don't know. The Workforce Training Center has been offering a lot of non-credit training for quite some time in the trades, they do not have a permanent location as well. Another need that we have is Bill Jung has been looking to find a request, a fab lab that we could use possibly at, at that location to also offer a fab lab for some of his business needs and business partners. And it says ISU, but that should be University of Idaho, excuse me, my slide is slightly different. And Charles Buck has approached us about a fab lab to do somewhat the same thing. So those needs have been out there. The, this proposal offers that we own ten acres adjacent to the workforce training at the River, River Bend Commerce Park. Our proposal here is to build a facility adjoining the Workforce Training Center and locate the welding program at that location. This would also facilitate the need to house the workforce training needs for non-credit training, the Small Business Development Center, and the University of Idaho, again, I apologize, for some of their R and D efforts. This is a rendition of what that proposal looks like. If you'll notice, the large building to the left of that diagram is the current Workforce Training Center. The rendition to the right, it's not quite the scale, I'll give you another rendition of it in a minute, but that is the proposal adjoining the Workforce Training Center that we are looking at this evening. The advantages that we see to this is that welding is our flagship program for the trades, it's our highest enrolled program for trades, it has the most consistent placement, and the most consistent demand. So it really is a program we want to house in a very, hopefully, a, a permanent location. This would allow us not to have to move this around regardless of lease or rental changes. So we see this as a real complement to both marketing our program and having a permanent location therein. It also is adjacent to classrooms, eating facilities, and amenities that are already there at the workforce training, not to mention it is already staffed. So that helps quite a bit. Not to mention the general ed could also be delivered there, it would help the post program, the graphic design, as well as local students that would be at Post Falls as well. The advantages are obvious to the Workforce Training Center, they'd have a location that's permanent, we'd have a place, maybe to put the wood products center that we just got a grant for, as well as small business and University of Idaho. So it also offers a training location for people in the Commerce Park, so we see a lot of good in that. This is a, a close-up view of the welding facility. You'll notice it has a fab area, a prep area, and a grinding area, so along with the welding facility, we think this is going to be a very good location to house what we need to do in a permanent fashion of one of our main programs for the trades. And the cost, we're looking at, these costs have been brought to us by, in about four estimates. One of them is, you'll notice the construction cost, this is a tilt-up, we, we estimate about, that's with taxes, one million, nine ninety-seven, eight thirty-five, design fees of one ninety-four, plus other costs, three ninety-two, and the contingency of almost two ninety-four, two thirty-eight, for a total of the, the two million, eight seventy-nine, five. The range of cost in this building goes from two point three to two point eight. So roundabouts, we're looking at somewhere in the range of two point four to two point five. And these costs have been given to us by about four different companies. Dale Hickman and I have worked on this, this is one of his proposals, he was in that range of two point three, this has also given us to two point eight, so that gives you a roundabout cost of what we're looking at. These are some of the breakdowns of costs, I'll just go through them very quickly, the total was already shown. And our kind of final slide is that what we see, we really do appreciate what Jacklin has proposed, their five-year lease at thirty-three-hundred per month, their improvements. Now, their improvements aren't these numbers. These numbers are what we're looking at, what it would cost us for the electrical and the mechanical, those are our estimates from numerous folks. So that's, that's a fairly high cost of about eight hundred Our option is looking at, to own it, about $2.5 million. It has potential to add on to the site. Should we want to cite it there? We also think that we have a great potential to purpose it out for other things beyond the welding, and we feel like it's a very good long-term investment. With that, I'll take questions.
Are there any questions? Ron?
Hey, Mike, how are you?
Yeah, good, Ron.
Couple quick questions. You never mentioned square footage on here, so it's hard to get a relationship to a cost per square footage.
The square footage is approximately $10,500.
So $250 a square foot is what the estimated cost is?
The estimated cost for, it breaks down into different categories. Dale has helped me out quite a bit. $85 for construction, for tilt-up. Dale, in fact, I think, if I'm not mistaken, do you have the breakdown in the details?
A little bit here.
I think we...
There's a separate sheet. Ron, do you have that?
Yeah.
The estimated development cost, draft number three?
That's correct.
Shows the welding shop at 8,000 square feet, approximately, and the office is circulation restroom's at approximately 2,500 square feet.
That's correct.
Follow-up question, Mr. Chairman. How many students are we currently serving in our lab compared to square footage? And what are you proposing for students we can serve in this lab?
We have 36 welding stations in our current lab. This is 36 welding stations in this lab with some expansion possible, 56 students per year or per semester.
Following to that, what does that do for our waiting...
Hang on, just a minute. Did that conclude?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Last question is, the proposed hours on this Workforce Training Center?
We would probably operate from 7:00 to 3:00 with a credit, and I would propose probably be 7:00 to 10:00 for the non-credit.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Sorry, following what Ron was asking though. Mike, what does that do for our waiting list with those numbers?
Well, it probably keeps it right about where we're at until we can expand in a new facility.
Any other questions? Judy?
The statement of need that you described, talked about the welding program, these expires June 30th, 2016. And is that a for sure? Is one of our other options that that could be extended?
Yeah, that's a for sure. Odetech has expanded their operation, and they are using the property that we're currently on, so that's a terminal lease. There is no extension of that lease.
Go ahead, Kristi.
While I'm on this page, you corrected ISU to U of I, request a fab lab for its R&amp;D efforts. What role would they have in participating in payment for any of this?
You know, I did ask Charles about that, and he wasn't quite forthcoming in that, but he said that they would come to the table with something if this was approved by the Board. So I can't say that I have a number, but he was forthcoming about, they would try to come up with something to help.
I just want to be sure we offer them that opportunity.
Yes, we would.
Are there other questions? Kristi?
Oh, just real quick, Mr. Chair. I'm just trying to clarify, so I understand, Mike. I thought in your statement and what's on here, you said welding will not be required to relocate until PTE building's completed. But then I, but I thought I heard you say this would be a permanent place for welding. So I'm just a little not sure.
You know, that's one of those things where we will be working on a new CTE, PTE building. Hopefully, it'll come in the very near future. If it includes a welding facility as part of that plan, that would be a great. If it doesn't, if it does have a home, if the site is out, the Workforce Training Center, it could be expanded on the 10 acres that are there. If not, it could stay or move. It could be repurposed, though, if it was moved.
I see. Thank you.
A couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And you just dovetailed into one of them for me. That was a nice segue. When you talk about repurposing the facility, what do you envision? An example, maybe?
Yeah, the Workforce Training Center does a lot of non-credit training in the trade. To date, we've made $15,000 offering non-credit programs for welding. What we see is an expansion of that effort, hopefully bringing certain, you know, monies back to the campus. But on top of that, offering welding, the wood products programs, PLC training, and so forth. So we see that as a great opportunity to expand what we can do with workforce training. Right now, we don't have a facility to do that.
Mike, one of the things, I may have missed it. You've got some numbers for us, which I appreciate, but one of the things I didn't see was a timeline, a PERT chart of any sort. To back into this, to be available in August of 2016, when does dirt have to be broke?
Dale, I'm going to have to defer to you on this one. Dale has been very helpful in helping from A to Z.
I think highly of Dale. I had put his name out once upon a time to take on some of those tasks.
Well, thank you. I'm finally here.
Yes, you are.
I'm Dale Hickman from H2A Architects here in town. We put together two schedules for a project of this scope. Originally, I believe the information we had was that the welding lease ended in June of 2015, so we worked from that date backwards. And we began with a regular schedule, moving along at a comfortable pace, to occupy in 2000, in fall of 2015. That schedule started last December '13.
I'm guessing you looked at an expedited schedule to meet that timeline?
We also looked at an expedited schedule, and that started two weeks ago. But we have another year now that it's been defined that the lease expires in 2016. So we are very comfortable time-wise at some point in the semi-near future, if you started this project, you would have a new facility at River Bend available for fall semester of 2016.
Dale, let me ask you a question hypothetically. If it was feasible and you were capable of expediting the schedule such to meet that 2015 date, what would your estimate be for additional cost to ramp up that schedule versus the potential cost savings of one year of lease if we were to get out of our lease early, which my understanding is that Odetech would let us out of the lease early if we were to request it?
That's correct.
Would there be enough savings in that one year of lease to justify trying to push that schedule aggressively?
The expedited schedule really has no cost impact. It has a decision impact on all the people that are involved in it. It requires, it requires quick decisions and move to the next task. The broader schedule allows some time for stepping back, looking at some things, adjusting. This would be, we're going to do this, we're going to do it now, and we're on it.
Any other questions?
Last question for Mr. Myers is there's, and through the discussions we've had with PTE, CTE, there's been some emotion around doing this off-site against the other education facilities. Has that been addressed and dealt with?
You're saying as far as off-site for this semi-permanent location for the welding lab? In what sites were you thinking of, Ron?
Well, I mean, we know that currently the outdoor recreation building is off-site, but as we propose a central facility, one of the biggest concern was is that this is off-campus and that here you have a separate facility broke away from the rest of the CTE facility. Has that been addressed?
Not really, but I have to say that what we're looking at, again, is a home that the welding facility can stay at as long as it needs to stay without ever being threatened by lease changes or rental changes or company changes. It would be ideal to have the welding located with the rest of the programs as we propose the new CTE building. But this will give us a permanent home until that happens, and I think that's the key. I would prefer, like you are probably referring to, is that these programs have a certain proximity that affords sharing of resources, and as we look at the new CTE building, that's hopefully where that goes. What this does, though, it also gives us, as we project this facility, it has a repurpose alignment with offering non-credit courses that we can't. So if it doesn't stay there, it still will be used very effectively and efficiently for non-credit delivery.
All right, Mike. So the chairman doesn't shoot me, but I'm supposed to be quick, but I have three questions. So we're going to go quick with these three. So if your answers are brief, I'll be fine with that.
Okay.
The first one was, being co-located there with the post and with Philippe's folks out at the graphic design, is there sufficient space currently to handle the academic side, or do you have to add additional classroom space?
There is current space available right now.
Secondly, the OPRV group, where someone, it was a function we thought we would be co-locating with the welding, and we looked at the Jaclyn proposal, they had their facility. Are we content to leave OPRV where they are right now for this two-year, three-year, five-year duration until we get the more permanent facility and we co-locate everything?
The short answer is yes.
Okay. Secondly, with the 10, or thirdly, with the 10 acres we have, is that enough space if we were to determine that that was the proper location for the build-out to co-locate all of the programs together?
The answer would be, from previous design efforts that we made about three years ago or so, I would say, from what we knew then, I would say it probably could be sufficient enough.
Yes, Kristi.
Mr. Chair, very quickly, I know you want to get into other items or other agenda topics. This is actually for Dr. Dunlap. What funding source has been identified for this?
For this particular project?
Yes.
Capital Reserve Fund. This is a capital project. Any other questions? Mike, thank you very much for that presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We are trying to move some of this, the agenda items forward, and I'm going to take one out of order right now, Tab 7, which is the athletic programs movement from SWAC to NWA. And let me, before we get that presentation going, let me suggest that this isn't obviously what a lot of people are here for this evening, and we want to give that as full a hearing as we possibly can. We do have some scheduling issues, and I'm going to take a short break at 7:30. That doesn't mean we have to be done with the presentation, but we have one board member that's got another commitment that they have to make, so I will take a short break. Recession's at 7:30. Done. Mr. Chair, I would ask that we try to get through Tab 6. I think it'll be very short, and I would like Mr. Nielsen here for that. Well... Sorry. I think it's going to be very quick. I think Andy's presentation's going to be very short. He's going to give us a number, and then I think we're going to move on. What's the sense of the board?
Well, I would really like him here for the whole agenda, but I understand he's got commitments. All right, I can support Todd, you doing?
All right. Andy, would you come forward, please, on Tab 6 and make your presentation, please? This covers a live broadcast of board meetings. It's a proposal that was looked into, a request that you look into.
Chairman Howard, trustees, President Dunlap, has requested a research to plausibility and necessary equipment to bring the board meetings live to television on our local cable system. Our current method of delivery to CDATV 19 and Post Falls Channel 12 is through a process of recording live to tape. We encode the video for playback on our local cable system's equipment. We upload that to our FTP site, and then we notify the respective cable outlets that that new program is available. This process usually occurs within the first 24 hours after our board meeting, barring any technical difficulties, mind you. Once notified, the operators at the local cable stations then download that program from our FTP site, schedule it into their programming, and then make it available for viewers in the local cable viewership to watch. That also occurs generally within that first 24-hour period. Included in your board book is a document that outlines the cost of the various options that will allow us to send an almost-live signal to the local peg channels operated by the cities of Coeur d'Alene and Post Falls. This would only get the meeting to the local Time Warner Cable system. It does not include any other retransmission service such as Dish, DirecTV, or Comcast. Of the three options presented before you, option one is the only one that requires a hosting service, which is an annual commitment ranging between $1,800 and $5,000 per year based on the usage. All of the options require a sustained data stream ranging from 6 to 12 megabytes per second. While that might not seem like a lot, over the course of a meeting that could last as long as four hours or more, the data adds up. But more importantly, we have continuously occupied a portion of our outbound bandwidth to deliver this meeting to our cable outlets. This bandwidth is shared amongst many types of services, emergency services, phone services, and a myriad of others in support of our mission to instruct and educate our students. The primary focus of the bandwidth at North Idaho College's purchases is for instruction. IT personnel would have to reserve a portion of this bandwidth to ensure that the data stream that we're sending out to the prospective cable outlets goes uninterrupted. Now, I mentioned earlier that we'd be almost live. This is the nature of the codex used to ship our program to the cable outlets. There's a minimum two-minute delay, programmable up to an hour, that's used to buffer the signal before putting it to air, much in the same way that a YouTube video buffers on your computer before it begins playing. The delay time is based on how robust our signal is and any data errors incurred on the point-to-point service that we provide. As we consider this venture, we must also consider the impact that this will have on the local cable outlets. This remote transmission of a live event will require monitoring for the first few meetings to ensure that the technology operates as expected. If it doesn't, onsite personnel must manually switch the signal over to the live transmission and wait until the meeting is adjourned, and then switch back to the regularly scheduled programming. Now, the equipment exists to make this process automatic. Although it has not yet been tested in this particular configuration, we would be the first to do so. Jeff Crowe, who was contracted by the city of Coeur d'Alene to operate CDATV 19, which is now 16.2 on Time Warner Cable, is here this evening assisting me as I make this presentation to you. He has expressed some concerns about this testing period, specifically related to who will be paying him for his time while we're in test mode. Other concerns he has expressed relate to the equipment installation, maintenance, and support. Now, I've not spoken with Kit Hofer from Post Falls Channel 12, which is now 16.1 on Time Warner Cable, but I'm certain she will have similar concerns. Lastly, consider the population of Kootenay County is approximately 120,000. Time Warner subscribership is only 20,000, equating to 16.6% of the population base. The question here must be asked as to how many of that 16% of the population actually watch peg television, and more specifically, watch the live events. Based on equipment cost, recurring fees, potential impact on personnel at the respective cable outlets, and small percentage of the Time Warner Cable subscribership, I would not recommend at this time that the board move forward on this item, as I don't believe it would be fiscally responsible at this particular point.
Any questions?
That concludes my presentation.
Done.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Andy, I have a couple of questions, if I may. Do any of these three mirror what Coeur d'Alene and Post Falls are doing right now? It sounds like maybe we're reinventing the wheel a little bit. I thought we were going to align and be similar to their operations.
Currently, Coeur d'Alene, excuse me, trustee Van Ducci, currently, CDATV 19 is the more robust out of the two stations. The programming that we upload to our FTP server is then downloaded by both sites. It is a mirror, so to speak, of our programming. The difference here is Channel 19 has a very robust schedule, including an education block that this meeting is broadcast in, NIC Today with President Dunlap is broadcast in, anything else CSC or U of I ships up to us is also broadcast in that same block. Post Falls Channel 12 is not nearly as robust. In fact, our programming that we provide them is the only original programming that they get other than their own meetings on cable.
Are their meetings also delayed by the two minutes to one hour because of the buffering?
Theirs would be, yes, sir.
So we're filling a slot in the Coeur d'Alene channel as part of their education block. And I guess I ask that because when you and I had talked previously, you said there was a slot available, like, tonight on that channel, but that we might have a scheduling conflict with the channel in Post Falls to run it live.
Right. Now, excuse me, trustee Van Ducci, Channel 12 and Post Falls, they're pretty much wide open on their schedule. If you've watched their channel, you'll find that they advertise... If you've watched their channel, you'll find that they advertise a lot of for-sale items, yard sales, those type things, and then they work in some programming, including their own meetings. Channel 19 for Coeur d'Alene has been very gracious in allowing us to interrupt their regular programming with a live meeting. They do the same thing for their city council meetings, for their LCDC, for their planning and zoning meetings. All of those interrupt their regularly scheduled programming on a live basis. They're willing to extend that opportunity for us as well. I cannot speak for Post Falls because Kit Hofer and their crew out there are somewhat reserved in what they put up on their schedule.
In talking about Coeur d'Alene being more robust than Post Falls, if I was to look at options one, two, and three, which one most closely corresponds to Coeur d'Alene, and which one most closely corresponds to Post Falls?
Trustee Vanducci, the equipment housed out in Post Falls, actually, the retransmission device that gives them the channel truly is more robust than the one CDATV-19 currently uses. What makes CDATV-19 more robust is the amount of programming that's available on it. If you check the schedule, you'll find that there are nearly 24 hours of original programming every day of the week on Channel 19. Channel 12 and Post Falls repeats a lot of things, a lot. So to answer your question more succinctly, as far as the three options that are there, each option is necessary for each station. There's really no mix and match on what's there, so...
Which one would Coeur d'Alene be?
Coeur d'Alene or Post Falls would be either one of those.
Now, let me give somebody else an opportunity.
I'm sorry.
Kristi?
Well, I'd like to call for the question. I just feel like there's a whole lot to digest, and maybe this should be a first reading at best.
I can do that.
Just a quick question. Is there a chance for us, I think, I think one of the concerns that Mr. Vanducci has is some regular scheduling. Can we get this set up to where that it would stream two hours without all of this additional cost, that we could get a slot that would let us do that without all this additional expense? I understand live is probably the cost associated with that and the transmission lines and all that, but can you stream this two hours afterwards, that you can schedule it, that it's going to start showing eight o'clock on the same night with any problems?
Trustee Nielsen and board members, the problem that we run into is that, as we're recording this particular meeting, tonight especially, the file size is rather large. And so one of the references I made is that we encode this program for retransmission on their product. That sometimes takes real time. So if this meeting goes four hours, that encoding process takes four hours. If there's anything very special about the meeting that takes it even longer, we go longer still. Now, again, this is barring any technical difficulties. There have been occasions where I have a computer malfunction, it will not encode the product, it runs all night long, I come in the next morning, and it's still only about 30%, and I restart the process. Four hours later, it's done, and I'm shipping it off to the FTP site for...
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
The question's been called on this, and I will put it up on the next agenda for further consideration. And Andy, thank you very much for that presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andy, thank you.
Let's move on to tab number seven, which is the topic of moving the athletic programs from SWAC, S-W-A-C, to North, NWAAC. N-W-A-C, yes. Kristi?
May I ask that, if Mr. Nielsen, if he can give us another 10 minutes since that 10 minutes was... So if maybe you could take your break at 7:40?
Yeah, I'm happy to do it whenever it's convenient, so let's, we'll go ahead and listen to the presentation.
My apologies. I have one of our largest customers here, and I put him off until 7:45 from India, just got in, and I promised him dinner, so... Because that they graciously do do that, we're trying to move a little bit faster than normal, so I'm sorry.
The benefit of taping, quite honestly, is that you will be able to see the rest of this, because we can provide you with a tape of it.
You know, staying up to 3:00 in the morning to see this is not one of my favorite things to do, but go ahead.
Well, and just in case you have insomnia or...
Yeah, that's right.
You're only young once. Joe?
Mr. Chair, trustees, and colleagues, Al Williams and I are here tonight to present a proposal to switch from the SWAC league to the NWAAC. I'm going to provide some background information, and Al will cover more of the details. First of all, over the last 10 years, this college has enjoyed record growth through enrollment, and our enrollment is directly inversely proportional to what's happening in the economy. As the economy goes down, our enrollment goes up, and vice versa. The economy is ticking up, and our enrollment has begun to decline. To the extent that this past semester, our enrollment was down 10%, and we reduced our budget already, $840,000. And so we are now within 11% decline this semester, and with a projected decline for fiscal year '15, facing a $2.3 million budget reduction that we need to get taken care of and present a balanced budget to the board at the April meeting. And so I want to give you a little bit of the background, because there seems to be quite a bit of criticism regarding the timing of this particular proposal. And so I mentioned that in the fall, we had a reduction. There was $840,000 that we took out of the budget at that point. We didn't know what our enrollment was going to be, our final count, this semester until the 10th day of enrollment, which fell in mid-January. By the time we calculated out those budget implications and factored in what we expect a enrollment decline for next year, we are now into February. And I have made it very clear to everyone on campus that we will all share in these budget reductions, and no area will be left unscathed, if you will. And so at that point in time, Al Williams, our Director of Athletics, came to me and said, "Joe, I'm going to go down and talk to the NWAAC to see what would be the criteria for us switching leagues." And so I asked Al if he'd like for me to go with him at that time for some moral support. He said yes, and so he and I went and met with the Executive Committee of the NWAAC. And they gave us what the criteria is, and Al will cover that in greater detail. And so with that, they said that, number one, you have to be invited into the NWAAC league. And we received a letter yesterday from the NWAAC that invites us into the league. Thirty-four schools voted on that, and it was unanimous that they would like to invite NIC into the NWAAC. There are some other documents I would like to enter into the record, and I'll just read through these so that they can be entered. One is from our faculty senate, and they are, they represent our employees, both staff and faculty, and they submitted a letter in favor of joining the NWAAC. I have a resolution from ASNC. They support moving into the NWAAC. And you have these documents before you. I received a letter from our 11 divisional chairs. They unanimously support moving into the NWAAC. I received comments provided by faculty, both for and against, moving into the NWAAC, and there are quite a few comments there. I received a letter from former President Bob Bennett, talking about why he supports the move into the NWAAC in relation to what the mission of the college is. Unbeknownst to me, there was an informal poll taken on Huckleberries, and 74% of the people who voted on that indicated that they supported the move into the NWAAC. And so when I look at budget reductions across the campus, and I look at the history of athletics, and this was brought up by Carol Lindsay a little bit earlier, you can see that athletics has enjoyed a considerable increase in their budgets, and part of that is because as the schedules get built and as costs escalate, we honor those schedules and provide more funding towards that. And so the question becomes, well, what do we, how do we go about reducing $2.3 million from our budget? That is very significant. This college has never experienced that in its history. So do we reduce carte blanche across the board, the exact percentage? Do we begin a rift of personnel? Do we look at reducing travel? Do we look at reducing maintenance and operation costs, or goods and service costs, or a wide variety of those? And so the question is, well, why do we talk about athletics now and not the rest of the budget? And that's because switching conferences is a policy issue and requires your decision on that. The rest of the budget, as we are going through that process now, and I and Sarah Garcia are meeting with every single budget manager, are what areas we're going to reduce, and that does not require a policy decision by the board. I have to come to the board in April to provide a balanced budget. And so there is a sense of urgency, because the impact of making these cuts and deciding what we're going to cut over the next two months is a fairly substantial process, and a cut in one area or not impacts other programs throughout the campus. And so from my perspective, and I think this is the right thing to do, and I would urge you to support this recommendation, and I would like to thank all of those individuals who made comments, both for and against, moving into the NWAAC. And so I appreciate them being here as well. But that's a little bit of the history in terms of why we are at this point, and why there is a sense of urgency in terms of needing to make a decision. If we wait until the next board meeting to make this decision, that gives the entire campus one month to finalize how we're going to reduce our budget by $2.3 million. And that's a pretty significant undertaking. And I'll turn it over to Al.
Well, I'll try to be as quick as I can up here with our limited time. This is my 11th year as the athletic director here at the college, and thank you all for coming out here. People didn't think there was a significance of athletics on the campus. This represents how much it means to people in their community right here. I was here about a year after they had that study, and I was actually on the side supporting, standing in the NJCAA. At that point, I was a coach at University of Denver. I think I provide a unique perspective on what are the needs or the perspectives for people in this community as far as what they should be doing as a former athlete, as a former member coming from Chicago, coming from out there, a region where I would not have been here under the current scenario if we were a region, a region team only. I'm a former coach, booster, and looking around the society as a deaf and minority. But also from the corporate side, I've been in Joe's seat, where you talk about the fiscal responsibility we have to have here, been a CEO for many companies, internal auditor of a Fortune 500 company, so I understand the business aspect as well, so I understand what we're doing as far as our budget cuts here. So when I look about what the options we have here, I can speak strongly for either side. You know, we've been in the NJCAA, for those that follow our program, we know we've been nationally ranked and nationally recognized in all of our sports. We've been nationally ranked in every sport of our program since I've been here. We've won national championships in women's basketball, for wrestling, number one in the nation for volleyball, women's basketball, men's basketball, multiple sports, runner-up in the nation for softball, soccer, number three in the nation, so we have success. So when the recommendation was made 10 years ago to go to the NWAAC, their comments were that, what difference did it make? We weren't that nationally recognized or going to be in national tournaments at that time anyway. Things have changed then. We are one of the more premier programs in the nation, athletically and academically. So when I come here with the recommendation that we consider switching, it's not going out of much thought and foresight. We talked about the budgets. This has not been a rushed decision on my side by any means. Because we've had continual budget cuts in our programs, and perceived cuts, because as the travel costs have gone up for our conference, for those that don't know, we have members in our conference that go as far away as Southern Nevada, Carson City, Nevada, Colorado Northwestern, southern parts of Utah, and our closest rival is Twin Falls right now. Our league has changed a lot in the last 10 years. And so to come back here and say we need to have a way that we can still remain competitive nationally within the current budgets, it's much stronger of a challenge now than it was 10 years ago. And each year it gets, it gets more and more harder for us to meet that budget. So now we're faced with this challenge now. What do we do? We've got, we've got nine anchor collegiate sports right now. The budget that I have, with the cutbacks in the grant aid, with the increased travel for our conference, with the proposed participation in the budget cuts to participate in the 1.6 million cuts for the college, we cannot do that and have all nine sports remain at a national level. So when I went to the NWAAC, I had to make sure we had this option to go this route before I could come back and present this to you or President Joe, as far as this being something they would allow us to do. It wasn't a foregone conclusion that the NWAAC would accept us. That's why I had to make sure before I even used that as an option, I had to make sure we met with them and got their support from the 35-member schools as far as being accepted. We're fortunate that they have accepted us at this time. There was some concern that we would not be accepted. We'd heard people in the audience saying, what are the pros and cons of being in the NWAAC? I think there is significant benefits to being in the NWAAC. I think with the budgets that we have, we can operate and keep all of our sports in that division. But I also understand the loyalty and strength we have for being a national program. So again, I can sit there and talk about both sides, because I understand that. But looking and being fiscally responsible, if I had to make a decision as far as whether I was going to maintain all nine sports, or for the benefit of national exposure only, be it the position where I can only maintain four, I don't think it would be the right decision to eliminate opportunities for student athletes on our campus to not maintain our outdoor sports like soccer, mini-women's soccer, mini-women's golf, or softball, the outdoor programs that have the most challenges, because they don't have a league alliance within the scenic west, with the exception of softball. So these are strong decisions we have to make here, but I think, looking at what we have as far as the budgets that are presented in front of us, this is the direction, I think, at this time that we need to go.
You stand for question? You ready for some questions?
Well, I can go into more detail. I know we're under some tight constraints, but we are under a unique position that we do have to get a decision sooner rather than later, because if we are going to go into the NWAAC, we've asked them to allow our outdoor sports to come in as early as next year, and if that would be the case, our soccer programs would be participating this fall, and we would also have our mini-women's golf teams and our softball teams participate this next year. They've given us a three-year window that we can bring over all of our sports, at which chance we would participate in the NJCAA until then. But because we have to make a decision to allow us to recruit, right now, our student athletes are on hold for our letters of intent, because we can't recruit a student athlete with them not knowing what league they would be participating in. If they come in here for national competition, and then we switch league midstream after we recruited them, we sold them a bill of goods. And so we've had all of our recruitment on hold at this time, so that's why it's urgent for us to get a decision sooner rather than later, because our coaches are on hold, NWAAC is on hold, and also I need to inform the NJCAA that if we're going to make a switch, we need to have schedules in our current league be adjusted so that we can notify them and give them the chance to adjust schedules across the board.
Any questions? Ron, you're a short timer. Do you have any questions? Will?
No, just a, just a comment, Al, is that I've known you since the day I got here. I've been involved with the Booster Club here and admire your leadership and your intelligence and your gift of being able to deliver a clear message, and it's got to be very difficult for you, and you've got to understand, a lot of the concerns that we had was, this came so quick. Some of us were out of town and didn't find out about it, and were reading about it on our phones, not knowing even what was being discussed behind the scenes. So it's taken a little bit of time for us to get caught up on that, but the most important thing for us is to see the support of the coaching staff that you have, your team, and the continued support of the program, no matter what league you're in. So I commend you on that.
Any other questions? Todd?
Actually, I have several. A couple of things. I looked at the states that are, that we're able to recruit within, and we talk about the complaint with the Washington State Financial Grant and Aid Awards and the eligibility rules of the NWAAC. I noticed, for example, like Montana is not a state that we can recruit from. We see that as a problem, or, you know, it's a border state for us. We do bring in kids from Montana. Are we going to be hamstrung a little bit by being very limited in our recruiting options?
Actually, Montana is one of the states we can recruit from.
Okay, I didn't see it listed.
Yeah, it is. It's Montana, Idaho, Oregon, Washington, California, Nevada, Alaska, Hawaii, and British Columbia.
Okay. Well, if you're sure, because I looked at the NWAAC stuff and it didn't have...
99.4% sure, but something's changed since I got here.
No, no, that's good, because I didn't see Montana, and that was one of the ones that just jumped out at me, being a border state for us. Also talks about our...
Hang on just a minute. Oh, sorry. Ron, did you have a question?
Hail to the older man. Quick question. If there was a motion that we postpone this decision so that we can all get our arms around this, would a 30-day delay miss our ability to be in the N WAC?
It would jeopardize it severely because, at least for the outdoor sports. Because right now, to help us participate in these budget cuts, we're trying to make that switch over as soon as possible because softball's at a budget deficit in their current budget. So to get them in this league would help us tremendously. And also with the soccer program, if they're waiting to hold the schedule to allow us to get in there, to delay that for the 30 days, wouldn't give them enough time as the N WAC to get in there. And I think if we minimize that to a max of two weeks, I think they would be a nice compromise. But the problem is, goes beyond just that, our student athletes that we've been recruiting are being put on hold right now. And then we may continue to lose them as we sit there and delay this decision.
So the, what I just heard you say is, four weeks is not ideal. Two weeks would make it acceptable. And then I would propose a motion, again, I apologize, I would propose a motion if possible, is that we call a special board meeting two weeks from today and have a chance to digest this. And we want to support you, Al. We want to support our college. We respect Joe's continued commitment towards fiscal responsibility and dealing with these enrollment cuts and cutbacks. We know that there's a problem. But for some of us that are just getting our arms around this, we would love to be able to be in a position where we had some time to talk about it as a group and to do whatever. So if possible, you say that two weeks would be acceptable. I'm prepared to, to, to attend another meeting for the sole purpose of just voting on this issue here.
Well, I respect your position there. Obviously, I know it is not for you to grasp on such a short notice, but anything you can do, provide that. And again, if there's options that would allow us to be secondary, we would go along with that. But I do respect your time and your consideration for doing this. And if we had a two-week limit, I think we could go back to the N WAC and say, please allow us this time. And I think they will understand the position with me maybe just being brought up to speed on where we are right now.
Okay. If the motion is to call a special board meeting in two weeks to address a single agenda item of the movement from SWAC to N WAC, that's your motion?
That's what I thought I said, but you phrased it better, but go ahead.
Actually, you put a lot of extra words in there. And I just wanted to make sure there were.
That was my motion, sir.
And do we have a second?
I would second that, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I, you know what, Al? I echo everything Ron said and certainly President Dunlap's presentation of the magnitude of the situation and the stress he's under to try to control this. But the board does need that time to process. We would look at the entire budget, what everything means, all the ramifications, all the moving parts. And that is part of the budget process. And I'd like to bring back athletics. If I could, I'd bring it back into the entire budget process. But it looks like it'll be two weeks out. And I can live with that is, I feel that during that time, people will have an opportunity to offer up solutions, their thoughts about it, alternatives. And that will just work in that timeframe. I really want to respect the process and the ability for the community to give their input. So I'm going to support that we delay this for at least two weeks. I'd like longer, but I can deal with two weeks.
Okay, we got a second. Any other conversation?
Well, I'm just trying to decide. I had some questions. I just want to understand some of the difference between the N WAC and the SWAC and how that would, the implications of that, how that would impact us and affect it. I'm trying to figure out, do I wait and save questions for two weeks from now if we go there?
Let me suggest that we can have those questions. Let's call a vote on this. The discussion can stay open so that Ron can leave and honor his obligations. So we've got a motion and we got a second to schedule a meeting in two weeks. And I'm sure hoping everybody's schedule is going to accommodate that. So we'll vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
Now we'll take a break.
But I would like, if you wouldn't mind, to stay around. Todd has some questions he wanted to ask.
Yes.
Do you want to take a break now? Are you okay for me to ask a couple of things?
Well, the reason I was going to take a break was so he could slip out of here, so.
All right, I'll just ask some questions then. One of them was regarding the ability to play in postseason competition. There was this discussion that if we had people that did not meet the N WAC eligibility rules because of how we'd recruited them previously under the NJCAA rules, they would not be able to participate in postseason play. If we were to transition the men's and women's soccer team, the golf teams, and the softball team for the ladies in the fall of 2014, does that preclude any of those five teams from playing in the postseason tournaments that year in 14, 15?
If their, if their rosters were not altered where their scholarship levels met the restrictions of the Washington member schools of the N WAC, then they couldn't compete in the postseason play. And they're doing that because they realize we have some freshmen there on their rosters. And it's unfortunate that if they can't compete nationally, that we wouldn't want to also reduce their scholarship level down. Now, the coaches do have the option to bring their scholarship levels down to the N WAC level, in which case we could participate. But because they realize that everybody may not be able to do that so quickly, that we have the option that if we don't have it at that level, we compete a regular season schedule and then you wouldn't compete in postseason. The minute that we got them all down to that level, we would all be able to compete in postseason.
That'd be, I guess that'd be an unfortunate thing that would happen if we make this decision is that not only would some of those folks now not have the ability to compete at the national level, they wouldn't even be able to compete in their postseason activities for their sport for the one year. So if you're a freshman now and you're a sophomore next year, that might be your last opportunity unless you move on to the four-year institution. Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that.
That's, that's not, it's not uncommon when you transfer conferences, even at the four-year level where there's always a probation period.
Probationary.
So that's not, that's not uncommon.
Or changing levels, D2 to D1 or any IA to D2. I mean, I understand that concept. Couple other questions.
Hang on, just a minute. Are there any other questions?
Oh, yeah, we have lots.
Let's spread them around a little bit.
All right, go ahead.
I'm going to ask you for some clarification too before we go move to the next question. Does this move include all of the sports? Or are there some sports that are going to remain in the national competitive arena?
Well, the conditions that we were accepted on the N WAC were that, well, the first time we asked, we went and met with them was could we just bring over the outdoor sports and retain our indoor sports in the NJCAA? Because they thought that would be setting the precedent, they didn't want to have to deal with with the other member schools to allow them the option of putting other sports in the NJCAA, they decided that the only way they would accept us would be that we would have to bring over all of our teams within a three-year period. So that being said, they had offered us to bring over the outdoor sports, which would be men and women's soccer, men and women's golf, and softball, starting as early as fall of this year. But we'd have to have all of our sports brought over, including men and women's basketball and volleyball over by 2016. Wrestling is impacted differently because N WAC does not have wrestling as one of their conference sports. They participate in the NJCAA already. So because of that reason, there are three schools in the N WAC that have wrestling. They are members of the NJCAA. And so wrestling would be basically unaffected because they would operate under NJCAA rules and can still compete for national championships. But they'd be the only team on our roster of sports that would be in that situation.
Thank you. Christie, did you have a question?
Mr. Chair, to follow up on that, Al, I'd like to ask actually Mark Lyon. If wrestling, which have been national champions, we should be so proud of them. But if they, if they're not subject to these rules, and essentially that, those athletes are allowed to go for a national title, what does that do with our Title IX issues for the other teams that are not allowed to go for a national title?
Short answer is, I don't know. But it would be something I can look into here in the next, short timeframe.
Al did mention it'd be interesting to know how the two Oregon schools and Highline out of Washington, out of Des Moines, those are the three schools, there's three of them with wrestling. Obviously, you must have to balance that in some capacity, whether it's still the overall numbers or, you know how they deal with that?
Well, only because it's how the opportunities are provided within your league. You're not providing an unfair opportunity within that conference. So as a member of that conference, if all of the schools are in that, are given the opportunity for the same way within the sports, then we'd be a member of the N WAC, we'd be subject to their rules. And it wouldn't be a Title IX violation because in the N WAC, all the members participate regionally except the one national one. And that's because they don't offer that as a sport. Now, if there are other sports within their league that were in a similar situation, they didn't provide that opportunity, then we would have an issue. But right now, we don't. The others have enough member teams within that conference that they can have their own regional championships, which doesn't require them to go to the NJCAA level.
Judy, you had a question?
Just trying to absorb because some things were handed to us just tonight at the board meeting. And this letter from the N WAC folk, I think lists some of the things you were describing here about which teams move which place. So part of this information is brand new to us. And I would think it would need to be shared in the community too, so folks understand. I'm trying to think about the logistics of how to do that. And I don't know if we establish a website or something that has this information so folks have access to it.
Well, there is a link, but I can summarize those so you realize the differences between the scholarship allotment. And that's the main reason why this is a strong decision for us.
I'm sorry, say it again, Al.
The scholarship allowance they have for the N WAC is significantly different from what is in the NJCAA. So for example, in the NJCAA, you're allowed, at our level that we're at, which is called Division One of the NJCAA, you're allowed to provide room, board, tuition, books, and fees. Whereas in the N WAC, you're only allowed to provide, I'm using basketball as an example, we can get 15 scholarships for basketball with those same guidelines, room, board, tuition, books, and fees. In the N WAC, you're only be allowed eight scholarships. You're only be allowed to provide up to 65% of tuition and fees for your end district or your WU area state. And you only can do that for, again, eight students. And you can't provide room and board or books. And so you're allowed to get another, up to $2,000 they can get in work-study. But that's something that can either be provided by the college or through different opportunities. But that's where you have some savings. And that's one philosophy that differs in the N WAC in that they do make revenue from their sports because you're filling up your roster with student athletes that are paying tuition and fees towards the general fund for your college. And they are, there are similar differences for all the sports. For example, in the NJCAA, for softball, it's 24 allotted slots. In the N WAC, it's 11. Soccer is, I believe, is 11 and there are 18 in the NJCAA. So those kind of variances allow you to not necessarily prioritize that as being a revenue source, but those opportunities are there if you're filling your rosters, the people that are paying full tuition. And even the ones that are getting scholarships are paying at a minimum of 35% of in-state.
And I think you've touched, sorry, touched on some of the things that I would like to have a better understanding of. And that's that budget implications of where, what these numbers do with some more graphics about, you know, we've heard it, but it helps me to see it and then see where the ripples go for those budget implications, not only within the athletic budget, but then what that does to our entire budget.
Mr. Chair, if we could stay on budget for a moment. Al, you've been very gracious this week helping me go through some of the numbers and try to grasp them. We really truly do want to do the right thing. We're just trying to understand all the consequences and make sure that the community's involved in this decision. So when we talked earlier, I happened to have a budget from FY 11, 12, that I can't even remember where I got it. But it was different from, from the 10-year history that I, that I also got. The biggest thing I want you to explain is the grant and aid. Because I think that is the biggest misconception. And it looked like it had been wrapped into the total budget cost for athletics. And it's about $650,000. And from understanding is that's really soft cost. And so those would be empty chairs in a situation we're in right now because our enrollment's down. So I'm trying to understand that grant and aid piece.
Well, the grant and aid is the pool of money that's allocated for the athletics department. There is an overall pool that we share with different areas, offices of instruction and offices for student services. But we have a pool of approximately 900,000, of which the athletics portion of that was 625,000. And when we had a change in the fee structure, where in the past, you could pay a flat fee, you could get so many credit hours, 16 or more, our budget allowed us to operate within that and still have enough scholarships for all of our student athletes. When they switched last year to a fee structure per credit basis, in essence, it only allowed us to budget 12 hours per semester. And so what cost us $625,000 for scholarships in 2012, it was approximately $800,000 to award those same scholarships when we were paying on a fee per credit basis. And so that was a significant shortfall within our overall funding for the program because we were short $200,000 to award scholarships. And so with that not changing for this year, that's why we had to consider how many scholarships we could award from the existing pool of money that we were able to operate from.
Mr. Chair, follow up? So it seems to me then, it isn't that, I'm sure travel cost has gone up. I'm really trying to understand this. But it looks like the direction of this board to change credit hours has really been the biggest hurdle for your athletic budget in grant and aid because we have not funded that full amount. And so when you and I talked, I tried to figure out, what are the actual really hard costs here? And I think we came up with about $400,000 shortfall if we were to continue on and stay in the SWAC. And so I think we also discussed, and you correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, that when board action sometimes has unintended consequences. And we certainly need to try to grasp everything. Todd says he grasped it right away. I didn't. When we changed the mileage allotment on travel, it used to be 35 cents a mile, and now it's a dollar, except for you. You're still at 35 cents a mile. Is that correct?
No, no, oh, no. We benefited significantly. I wish it was. But that's what happened. Some of these changes we did internally impacted us when the fee per mile went increased for our fleet of vans on campus, which we use to go back and forth to the airport or take to close trips. That went up significantly. And then also changes that were beyond our control, where they increased the number of officials for a ballgame for softball. Or the cost that was at $1.150 to go to Salt Lake, since 2008, we've not had a budget increase for M and O. And so now the average cost to go to Salt Lake is about 325. So you compound that over the last five years, we haven't had any kind of budget increase. We've been significantly strapped operating within our current budget. And so our shortfall of our own in-season budget has been significant. And then you look at what our success has brought upon us, where we, all of our teams qualified for region travel, which requires us to go a little further out of our area. And you usually have to fly down there to Utah or Mesquite, Nevada, or different parts of the country for national travel. We've been a victim of our success in that we operate from the contingency and draw about $150,000 because of our regional national travel, because of our success. If we were not successful, it wouldn't be an issue, which was the case 10 years ago. Now we qualify with all of our sports being nationally ranked. So it costs money for us to fly to play these different tournaments. And of course, we represent as well when we get back there.
Well, that's a huge compliment to you and your coaches that we're such a success.
Let me, Todd, you had a question?
Yes, actually two, but I'll link them. And by the way, I was the lone dissent in vote because I did understand some of the implications. Thank you for.
Sure.
That's okay.
Should have spoke louder.
I'm a lonely vote sometimes.
I never say that again to you. I'm sorry.
It's all right. I'm a lonely vote sometimes. I guess two thoughts that occur to me. One is that we never had a precursor to know that we were going to have this budget deficiency. I guess in a sense of, I didn't feel that we were hearing that last year or from the prior year, that this was becoming an imminent crisis. It's suddenly we're here and we're threatened with eliminating sports or changing league to make this fiscally work. So I feel like it kind of snuck up on us and I'm not sure I understand how that happened. In that same vein, as we look at some of these programs, and maybe wrestling's a unique situation, because I understand the schools, you know, have a son in college right now on athletic scholarship. So I get how many scholarships are appropriated. And wrestling's an unusual one. one. We actually get less scholarships for wrestling than there are actually starting positions in wrestling. There's 10 weights in wrestling, and we don't even get that many scholarships. And wrestling's unique, too, that they parse a piece of them out. There's a quarter scholarship here, half scholarship. But Jack mentioned something, Jack McNeil, earlier, that said that Pat had mentioned that there's, you know, 60, 50, 60, 70 guys in his room, and that there's maybe upwards of 30 or 40 of them that are not getting any scholarship help, and so that they are contributing to the tuition pool. When we look at the deficit that the athletic department is running, are we taking back into account those students that are just students that just happen to be on an athletic team, and that contribution into the general fund? Because, I mean, maybe wrestling's unique in that, that they have 30 or 40 folks paying their money, but that would seem to offset a little bit of that loss that we're carrying.
Just for clarification, your numbers, this year, start of the year, Pat had 64 wrestlers up there, and only 15 of them were on any kind of scholarship. And you can't split them out on the NJCAA. You can only give money to 15 people. And so we did have approximately 40 walk-ons, 50 walk-ons out there that stuck around for even past second semester. So we did bring that to members of the president's cabinet. They are aware of the impact that we have, and other rosters are that same way as well, where we have walk-on athletes that aren't getting any kind of tuition and fees and are still on our rosters. So we do provide that kind of overall general contribution to the budget. And not just that, some of the programs like golf are not even on full scholarships as well, and they split that up amongst their portion of a flat fee for grant and aid dollars. They split it up amongst 16 student athletes for both teams. So there are ways that we do contribute back. Not only that, as people are known in studies, athletes are known to bring more people along with them, even though they may not be involved in sports. So there are things that the marketing aspect of athletics do, that brings students to our campus, and it's also a marketing awareness that that's usually the first way that a student knows about a college is through athletics. That's what people usually realize were the front porch of the college. So our marketing aspect goes well beyond our region, and that's why we've been so successful to market and recruit to high schools, not only here, but all throughout the Northwest. And with our national exposure, we get kids from all over for all of our sports.
It's interesting you mention that. My son got married in August, and now his wife is attending school with him out in Nebraska, so.
Any other questions? Kristy?
Yes, Mr. Chair, another budget issue. Al, I again tried to understand this with you trying to help me through it. From what I understand, in 2008, we kind of did a little bit of shift with our budget, where we stopped increasing, and stop me if I'm wrong, or correct me, we stopped increasing the scholarship amount to match any increase in tuition that the board would set. And so since 2008, I'm understanding that the scholarship amount has remained flat, but the tuition has gone up per our directives, and we're not matching. Is that correct?
Now, you may not necessarily be exact, but it wasn't impacted. What happened is we used to have where, as tuition and fees went up, the grant and aid would go proportionally. And there was, in the past, slots that were allocated per sport based upon NJCAA scholarships that were allowable, and when tuition and fees would go up, our budgets would go up. But because there were times when we would recruit more regionally, we wouldn't hit the high point of our budgets for grant and aid, so it didn't impact us when we weren't getting these internal adjustments when tuition and fees went up. It wasn't until three, four years later, we started feeling the crunt of that, where we didn't have any money for summer school because we had used all of our money when tuition and fees matched our budget allotment. But it really hit us this past year significantly when it went through that 12 fee per credit hour basis. So, you know, you're right, when that internal accounting structure didn't change consistently throughout the years, there weren't those internal adjustments that were impacted, that weren't adjusted, rather.
Mr. Chair, follow-up?
Is there a follow-up on that question?
Yes. And at one point, from what I understand, you did have a budget that would cover these kind of times we're in right now. And I guess it was examined by our past administration, and it saw that it was sitting there, and so quickly it was absorbed in other uses. I'm certain legitimate, we have a lot of legitimate costs on this campus. I don't have any doubt about that. But it was absorbed.
You're right. That's always a fear people have on the campus, if you don't use your budget, it's going to get spent or taken away. And in this situation, it did happen. Because we were recruiting so many regional athletes, we would have $150,000 left in our grant and aid budget. And then when we had a former VP look at that and say, why don't we reduce that a little bit? Because we had a couple of years we were lower, even though we were advised that it was cyclical, we'd said it would impact us down the road, and sure enough, it did. And that was the problem that we had. We would have been well within our budget lines if these adjustments hadn't been made, and sometimes you can scream, but, you know, it can only be heard by so many people.
Okay.
Wait, wait, follow-up on that.
Yes.
I'd like to make a comment on that. When I arrived at the college and began examining budgets, it was clear to me that portions of the athletic budget were in different locations. And I'm not suggesting there was any, anything subversive in that. However, in my budget, in the president's budget, there was $150,000 for contingency. And when I asked what that was for, it was said, well, that's for athletic travel, for tournaments and national play. When I tried to find out what was the grant and aid budget, that was located in about three or four different locations. And so one thing that I directed the budget office to do is that we are going to be transparent with our budgets, and we are going to have full disclosure about the costs of our programs. And so when you look at that 10-year escalating cost for athletics, that probably was never revealed before in that summary or in that fashion. And so by putting this together, it shines a spotlight on what the actual costs are, and you begin to take on a different perspective in terms of how it was funded and how that budget has escalated over time.
Mr. Chair. Actually, Joe, I do have some, I have a little information on that. So that was, from my understanding, it was before I was on the board, it was actually back, President Bennett, from what I understand, was in charge. That was specifically designed, it was removed from the athletic budget and put into the president's budget for oversight purposes so that the president, you couldn't just willy-nilly dip into it. The president needed to give approval. So it's been sitting in your budget for years with the idea that it is used for travel. So that's the history that, as I understand it.
Any other questions from the board?
I...
Yes, Todd.
Maybe that last response answered part of my question that we really didn't answer, was that why it seemed like it snuck up on us. It was partly Al talking about the change in the credit hour costs, and then you talking about trying to consolidate it all into one pool of money that was more identifiable versus several. Is that, so we didn't really have a good insider vision as to what we were spending previously?
Well, let me comment on the notion that this snuck up on us. We knew and predicted that as the economy got better, our enrollment would decline. And that was one of our planning assumptions going into the last budget year. And as we moved into that year, I kept the board apprised of what was happening with enrollment in terms of the drop in enrollment. You were also apprised that we took an $840,000 budget reduction last semester. Our planning assumptions going into this next fiscal year include further reductions in terms of enrollment, of enrollment decline. And so I believe that we have been forthright in terms of presenting information that would lead one to believe that we are at a point where we're facing some pretty significant budget reductions.
I was just referring to the sports component. We talked about the overall budget, and so it wasn't obvious that the sports component was going to be struggling quite to this level.
Judy?
This discussion just highlights for me the fact that, yes, you, our administration did alert us to, and we were all girding for what we hoped wouldn't be quite as severe as it is, but it is. Probably the fact that, we're talking about that, and your whole big budget is different than now seeing a portion of it that's having an impact that has a real time crunch to it, that came faster down the track than I expected, realized, whatever. Here we are. But the discussion we're having tonight, and especially without one of our board members here, is to be sure that we understand all the ripples that are ahead for us whichever way we go. And having you flesh out some of the budget numbers is helpful to me, which I don't have in the one-sheet summary that's here. And I think that might help our board as we meet next time, with your help, to walk us through some of this again. It might help the community understand, there are a lot of numbers thrown around, and I think we should be in control of the numbers that get shared. And if it needs some narrative with it, then let's do that. And again, I'll leave it up to you all to figure out how to get that out and about. I know you've been visiting in the community, but this is really our board's first time to visit about this, and probably needs another round, and trying to focus how you can move us along in this process. For me, the numbers part of it is, how it fits into the big budget is very important.
Kristy?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I have a couple of different documents. Joe, I think you sent these to me when we were talking about this back and forth. And one of them is the 10-year, the 10-year history of the athletic budget, and then the other is FY 11-12. And what I didn't understand is, is the student fees are so different. So for instance, in FY 12, the student fees of the athletic portion of the budget are $333,499. But if I look over here at 2011, 2012, it actually lists, it lists in total 1.3 million. And so, and then it has the breakdown for women's is 686, 747, and then for men's is 686, 751. So I don't understand, I just don't understand the discrepancy.
And we all haven't seen that, so.
Right.
And I don't have the one document in front of me that you're referring to, Trustee Wood, and so I will have to ask Sarah about that. Sarah, do you...
That was the attachment to the email, correct?
Yeah, okay.
I did see that.
All right. That's probably a question that we can address with some additional information later, or do you have the answer now?
I actually can give the answer to that now. Trustee Wood, I'm right here.
Oh, thanks.
Sorry, Sarah.
The ventriloquist.
That's all right, yeah. I'm talking out of the back of the room. The difference between the two reports is that the 10-year history that I put together is actually showing, the $300,000 that's shown in that report is the actual fee that's collected through the tuition process, whereas the other sheet you are looking at, and I don't have a copy of it, so, but based on the fact that my office creates all of this stuff, those numbers include the general fund contribution as well as the student fee combined, because that's the document that you're looking at from 11-12 was prepared for the audit purposes. And for clarification during this discussion, I was trying to separate the general fund from the actual fees collected from the students for more clarification.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chair, I do think all these documents, and maybe even more, should go to the entire board, and it would be very helpful for our discussions.
Happy to put those together. Any other questions of Al or Joe right now? All right. We have had a motion that was passed earlier that moved this discussion on two weeks to a special board meeting, and hopefully we'll be able to get the additional information that's been identified and requested by the board members to the board members before that date, not on that date, but before that date. Additionally, before we get off this topic, I know this is an issue that has a great importance throughout our community, not just the NIC community, but the larger community. And we've already seen that in some of the comments here today. And I would encourage those who have comments to use email, use regular mail, to send comments in. And Mark, maybe you can give an address where these comments can be sent in, because we would like to hear from you. This is an important issue for us to listen to the community on. And Mark, would you let us know how they can get the comments to the college?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. It's BOARD, B-O-A-R-D, not B-O-R-E-D.
Sometimes.
B-O-A-R-D at NIC.edu, and that comes right to our office, and we can compile them.
Great. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, we need to publicize that more than just here in the meeting time.
It may well be. I'm not sure how we do that, but...
If I may...
Yes.
Mark seems to have a direct line to the press, maybe Maureen Dolan or somebody could help advertise that or put that out there, or say that we're soliciting input from the community, and that's one of the ways they could submit it.
Can we move on to the next agenda item? All right. Thank you very much. I want to go back to one of the agenda items that we skipped. This is kind of a housekeeping matter, but it's rescheduling the June board meeting from June 25th to June 23rd. The reason for that is President Dunlap will not be in the area on June 25th, and so we're asking that that board meeting be moved two days earlier. Any questions, or can somebody make a motion for us so we can get this disposed of?
Mr. Chair, I move to change the June board meeting date from June 25th to June 23rd, 2014.
Meyer seconds it.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sorry, that was an aye for me, too.
Moving on now to old business, the second reading, Credit for Prior Learning Policy. Mike Myers?
Yes, Chair, Mr. Chair. This is a policy, the Credit for Prior Learning, and I'm representing Lita. She presented this at the previous meeting. The Credit for Prior Learning Policy deals with a portion out of accreditation. You can have it, or you don't have to have it, and it's the accreditation for Northwest Accreditation is 2.c.7. And it's a policy that allows students to get credit for prior learning through a procedure that we have in a handbook. And this handbook is entitled CPL 121 and 122. The first part, 121, is a course that allows you to review whether you have that. 122 is a portfolio class, and through that, you can get up to 25 percent of that degree towards it. For instance, if the degree is 60-credit degree, you can get up to 15 credits towards that degree based on Credit for Prior Learning. The, a couple of examples where that applies, that would be fairly obvious. If you're a police officer, and you came back and you wanted to apply and go through the police officer program and get an AES, you could apply through a portfolio process, for instance, some of your range time. So we could portfolio that, and that would count towards the degree. Another example that is pretty common, if you went through the Air Force and you were a mechanic, and you did airframe and engine, you could take it from both the transcripts from the College of the Air Force, and then also you could portfolio by documenting those hours you spent in training towards that. Again, it's up to 25 percent of that degree, and it's a policy that NIC did not have. But I think this gives a lot of folks, primarily in the professional technical area, a chance to portfolio their experience outside.
Any questions, Todd?
Mike, real quick, that 25 percent, I know LCSC has had a really good program with this for a number of years. My mother even participated in it. Is this mirror kind of what they're doing? And I believe 25 percent, is that kind of the statutory limit, and that's as far as we can go?
It is. Accreditation, Northwest Accreditation will only allow 25 percent.
Is that where LCSC is? Kind of...
They have to be. If they're under Northwest Accreditation, they can't have anything else. It's a fairly common program. A lot of colleges have it. You can choose, do you have it? Or as an accreditor, which I go out and check this all the time, you don't have to have it, but if you have it, it's a great asset.
Thank you.
And that follows along the same question that we asked, that I asked earlier. Is this similar to how other community colleges and folks that we work with do it so it's available and people know enough, or we'll get, help them know enough? There's a consistent expectation from our students.
Yes. And there is an organization called CAEL, that's C-A-E-L, and they tend to set policies and standards. So generally speaking, we would participate with that organization, and they give the guidelines for these policies. So it's a nationally, it's a nationally recognized organization that guides this type of policy.
And the follow-up on that is, therefore, folks won't be disappointed or surprised because there's a consistent description of what, how people are, how their experience is perceived, and therefore, well, this inconsistency from the student point of view is very helpful. And this organization helps make that happen.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Would...
Well, right on to that, and then there's no problem with articulation. Then we have full articulation, everybody accepts it.
Okay. The way this is written, this is a, this is a policy that applies at this time for professional technical programs only. The reason that is, is that generally speaking, when you portfolio experiential learning, you cannot translate that into a transferable. Now, they are working on that, and CAEL will set policies to allow transfer degrees to use this type of tool to transcript. But this is an experiential learning type of tool, probably more associated with professional technical, less so with transfer. It's hard, and I always refer back to an experience I had. A student came up to me one time, he said, "Listen, I'm a social kind of guy. I'd like to get credit for sociology." And I said, "I don't think we can do that." So you can see that it doesn't really translate as well for transfer programs, but it's very applicable for professional technical. It will be coming, though. I've heard of the state, they're working right now to find ways to use this for transfer as well.
If there are no other questions on that, anybody want to make a motion? This is the second reading.
I'll make a motion, sir, to approve.
To approve 5.04, 07?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good policy. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
I didn't give you the full motion. We have been slowly losing people, I think, because we've been going for a couple of hours now, and platters are getting full. So I want to use the board prerogative, take a 10-minute break. So we all come back here in 10 minutes so that we can finish this up. Welcome back after our recess. Our next item of business is Tab 2 under our... Welcome back after our recess. Our next item of business is Tab 2 under our agenda, and it's the second reading of Revised Business Office and Facilities Operations Policy 2.03.02 and Elimination of the Financial Aid Policy 5.03. President Dunlap?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and trustees. This is the second reading as part of our comprehensive review of all of our policies, and this particular one is Policy 2.03.02, and it is a business and operations policy that is to provide for proper stewardship of college assets. And really, the changes in here are grammatical. We changed the name of the office from Administration to Business and Finance. We changed campus emergency and safety regulations to risk management guidelines, and then a couple other editorial changes in there. There is no substantive change to this policy, and this is the second reading, and I would request your approval of this policy.
So, we'll address these policies separately, then, I guess. Are there any questions on Policy 2.03.02?
I make a motion?
Yes, motion?
If I move that we accept the changes to Policy 2.03.02 effective 3/25/09. Whoop, that's the wrong date, sorry. Effective today. That's the old-timey one.
Why don't we just adopt the policy change and let it take place along with the other policy changes that we're making?
That's just what I was thinking. Thank you.
Good.
I'd second that, Mr. Chair.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Mr. Chair, the picture that I had was cracked, and it's been slowly leaking, and apparently...
Would it be all right if we continue while you wipe up your mess?
Start building the ark.
Let's move on to Elimination of Financial Aid Policy, then.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Policy Number 5.03. The entire policy reads, NIC will steward the financial aid process as outlined in the federal guidelines that are updated yearly by the Department of Education. We have no choice in that matter. The manner in which we administer financial aid is regulated by the Department of Education, and so this particular policy serves no purpose. This is the second reading of that policy, and the proposal is to eliminate that one-sentence policy.
Any discussion or questions, any motions?
Sure, I'd make a motion to support the recommendation by Dr. Dunlap to eliminate Policy 5.03.
Second?
Meyer seconds.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Our next agenda item is one that, quite frankly, I look forward to every time we meet, because it's celebrating success.
Yes.
And we always hear some great things that are going on, and while Molly's getting up to the podium there, I want to do something that I forgot to do at the beginning of our session. I indicated before, I thought it would be beneficial to all of us during our meetings to review the mission statement from North Idaho College, and the mission statement is that North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the Northern Idaho communities that it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning, and that's probably a good lead-in to your presentation.
It is. Thank you. Thank you. Chairman and the board, thank you so much for having us. We're a cat of a different color for you tonight, and we are glad to be that cat. I stood here before you, I believe, a year ago. I'm a part of a program that is Albertson's funded, and my colleague Judith George and I, until recently, were coined and known on campuses, those I Best girls. They were always kind of getting into things and shaking things up, and at the time we presented last time, we were about midway through our grant and midway through building our programs. I'm here tonight to tell you kind of where we are since we left you last. We did conclude the first phase of our grant, and we did really well. We did really well. Our students did very good, and as a result of that, there were six schools initially involved in the project. Four were asked back to write, and we were funded as those four. So, we did a proposal. Albertson's came to the table and said, "As a reward for your good work for your students, we would like to fund you for another three years." So, we are with you for another three years. In our write, we were able to achieve something other schools were not able to, which was that we were come out of our position of being a very small R and D type of thing where we could meet minimal students' needs, to we are now going to branch both sides of campus, and we are working with Student Services as well as the instructional side to provide services for 500 students over the next three years. So, we did really well. Another part of our reward was that we had a film crew come onto campus and document us, so that was part of our reward, and a little bit of, to our horror, that they were with us for a week. They followed Judith, the students, and I around campus. We'd like to present the video that presents all of the schools that were involved in the initial write. There's a big one that we'll put on the website. This is just the NIC look, because we thought it was more pertinent to you. So, you'll see a lot of our students and a lot of familiar faces in this as a result of the production. We look at it as the on-ramp to any highway towards a profession or career field that you want to do through education. They can get on at any point, and we'll make sure that they get to their destination. Comparing our students with other GED students, they do significantly better. We've been kind of blown away by the outcomes. We've had really remarkable success.
At-risk can be defined in a lot of ways. For this particular group, it's those that have had an issue somewhere in the system along the way that they've dropped out of school. You can't really overstate the success that this program has for students on our campus.
When you walk through these doors here at the school, you feel greeted with open arms. It's a warm and welcoming environment. They made sure we were taught what we need to be taught and to be able to succeed in the workforce.
Molly and Judith have always helped, not just with school, but with just any kind of personal issues I have. I can talk to them in private.
With this program and the advisors helping them, they're getting good information. The student's still having to make the decisions, and the student's still having to do the work, but they're armed with the right tools to do that.
The most fantastic things could happen when you have the students motivated and people are there looking after, intensely looking after their needs and helping them succeed in life, not just in, you know, the subject material. That's easy. It's succeeding in life that really counts.
We do intrusive advising. We're kind of in their face a lot. We get in their bubble, and we do. If they're not in class, we call. If we see them in the hall and they've missed a class and we haven't been able to get in touch with them, we ask them what's going on.
We believe in servant leadership. We believe in the idea of making sure that we walk with them along their educational path, and we advocate for them.
One of the things this program for sure allows us to do is to keep the standards high. The expectations are there that they're going to succeed. Then, why not? Why shouldn't they succeed, just like anybody else has succeeded?
The success that it's brought to them has been phenomenal. The number I can throw out is 86%. When we talk about a 20% graduation rate or 22% default rate, and suddenly you throw out an 86% retention and completion rate, that's really unheard of in any program.
I Best has meant the world to me as far as getting back into college.
The plan is to do the associate's degree, and they see that associates, and, you know, it just shows, which is putting in extra work and all that stuff.
I plan on graduating with a associate's degree in machine technology. Going to college is a really good experience and life-changing. It's definitely worth it.
You may recognize some of the students, because a lot of them came and stood in the back of the room when we were here last time, and if you weren't here, some of their stories were Jesse that was in there that said he's getting his associate's. He was the welding student. He hopped trains. He left school and traveled America, and he got a lot of living under his belt by the time he came to our door, and man, is he an amazing young man in our community now. They're doing public speaking engagements. We had the opportunity to do the River City Leadership Academy a few weeks ago with them, and as much as it scares them to their core, they're willing to do it because of the experience that they've given us. I mean, it's not necessarily about what we've done, it's the data they provided us. I am so happy to say that that group of students came in from homeless shelters and from the streets and without GEDs and those dropouts. They accrued more credits, had higher GPAs, and a higher retention and persistence rate than any other group at NIC. Well done. And we could not be prouder of them. I will go anywhere with Jesse and Sam. The thing that you will see going forward is that we are shedding the I Best name, so the I Best girls are coming out, and we will be having a new identity. I Best reflects federal funding, and Albertson's is refunding this almost entirely for the next three years. Now, institutional match funds were accounted for because we're training faculty, we're training Student Services personnel to work the same the way that we did, so we are integrating resources on campus, and you will see that reflected in some of the work, that people are coming to the table and saying, "How can we do this with you?" And so, we're building those efforts. So, we will have a new brand and a new name and a new face. We will have some celebrations around that and present it. You will all be invited. We'd love to have you on our house if you want to come, and you'll see a lot more of us in the rollout in the next few months. I'm glad to field any questions, if you have any, or let you get on with your business if you don't.
Any questions?
Comments, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You know, that was a fabulous presentation. Thank you. It's so fun to see that. The Albertson's Foundation has been an incredible partner, not only to North Idaho College and higher education, but, gosh, going back years, sitting on boards, what they've done for K-12, and if any of them are watching tonight, what a wonderful legacy that they carry forward for education and what they really, the impact they have in individuals' lives by putting their dollars right where they belong in education. So, I just applaud them, and applaud you and your program.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Todd, did you have something?
After her.
Pardon?
After her.
After her? Oh, after she's done with her presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Molly, before you sit down, I want to say thank you very much for this update. It really is gratifying to see the success. As was indicated, it's almost unheard of, that kind of a success ratio, and sensing your enthusiasm?
Thank you.
We can see why that works, and I want to thank you very much for that.
Thank you. I will tap dance in any time of night for you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, Todd.
Sure. On that note, as Grayden gets up and starts to sneak out, I love the terms intrusive advising. I would love to maybe see an agenda item in the next month or two, now that we're into the second semester, to hear what our advising initiative and the success that we're having there, and kind of get an update on that. You briefed this last semester, and we've ramped it up this year, and I'm curious to know how we're doing.
Okay. Our next agenda item are the constituent reports, and our first presenter is Beni Achievers for ASNC.
Good evening, Chairman Howard, other members of the board, Mr. Lyons, Dr. Dunlap, my esteemed constituents and guests. It's great to see you again for this board meeting, and just hearing about the success of the I Best program, that brings joy to me as a student, recognizing that my fellow students are doing so well in that program. That's amazing, so I commend you on that work. I'd like to invite my constituents to come up, as I'm going to provide a statement before my report to the trustees. The statement is being made on behalf of my fellow students, NIC faculty, and in NIC staff. This comment speaks in regards to the proceedings of January 22nd and January 28th NIC Board of Trustees meetings, and is in regards to constituent reports. I speak on behalf of my constituents. As a student, especially a student leader, I am sincerely disappointed with the lack of professionalism during last month's Board of Trustees meetings. Robert's Rules of Order were not adhered to, which led to what I believe to be inappropriate questioning from Trustee Banducci to Mrs. Michelle Lipert, the Faculty Assembly Chairperson. Also, on January 28th, during the Special Board of Trustees meeting, Trustee Banducci's behavior toward his fellow trustees and Mr. Mark Browning, Vice President of Community Relations and Marketing, was inappropriate. We believe such comments were harshly interrogative and disrespectful. No constituent leader or administrator deserves to be addressed in such a manner. Comments made by Trustee Banducci during these two meetings are not appropriate in a professional setting such as a board meeting, so we are asking the board to please take the opportunity to better represent the college and make an extra effort to act professionally. Our expectation of you as professionals and leaders in our community is to set a standard for this campus, and unfortunately, we haven't seen that in dialogue when difficult situations do arise, and so I stand here simply to say that we'd like to strive together to make this happen. Let's model the way together for appropriate and healthy dialogue to take place and encourage an environment where everyone's voice can be heard and respected. So, thank you for listening. Now, I'll give you my report from ASNC. Right now, we have an exciting time going on, because we have three new ASNC senators that were appointed last month and recently this week. Senators Anna Lucky and Justin Fink were appointed and inducted last month on January 28th during the ASNC board meeting, and Senator Leila Abrams was appointed and inducted yesterday at our ASNC board meeting. Now, we are very excited to have a full student government team. Anna, Justin, and Leila are all wonderful individuals and bring strength to the current student government board, so I'm very happy to have them. The ASNC fiscal year budget for 2015 has been finalized. Yesterday, February 28th, at our board meeting, we passed a resolution for the fiscal year 2015 budget to be approved as presented, and we will be a part of the budget process come April, the trustees meeting. We are currently actively recruiting students to run for ASNC student government, which is also an exciting time for us. We made it a goal for each current ASNC board member to recruit at least four candidates each, and so, so far, we are on track to perhaps having the largest, our largest election candidate race ever, which is very, very exciting. Senator Josh Wan here intends today, he's very proud to announce that he has nine candidates personally that have committed to running, and that almost equals last year's amount of students that ran. So, we should see a large increase in student participation. We are currently conducting a survey to evaluate students' perspectives on having a recreational center facility on campus, and this survey will be open until next Friday, and we will evaluate the results of the survey and hope to have that presented to the trustees either March or April, depending on how the survey goes. Now, we passed a resolution yesterday at our board meeting. It was Resolution Number 300300 in response to Idaho Senate Bill 1254, and it states that the ASNC board recognizes the importance of maintaining policy to provide for the security and safety of the students, staff, and faculty at North Idaho College. The NIC Campus Policy Number 7.04.01, which was signed March 26, 2003, addresses the carrying of weapons, including concealed carry of firearms, and this policy has been effective regarding the safety of our college community. Idaho Senate Bill Number 1254 seeks to remove the ability of higher education campuses in Idaho to regulate policy regarding the carrying of handguns for persons who obtained an Idaho Enhanced Concealed Carry Permit, and will mandate that college campuses allow those with a permit to carry a firearm on college campuses. As representatives of the student body of North Idaho College, we feel it is our duty to oppose this bill. Senate Bill 1254 will have a negative impact on the mental welfare of many of our students, which could directly affect the success of students and the pursuit of an education. Although we oppose this bill, we support a policy change to increase the training, education, and capabilities of campus security. I sent a letter on behalf of my student representatives to members of the First, Second, Third, Fourth, and Seventh Idaho Congressional Districts. This letter states our opposition to the bill and was mailed last week, February 21st, 2014. Also, a resolution was passed yesterday by the ASNC board to commit to having one ASNC representative attend at least one president's cabinet meeting monthly to better be informed of the college's goals and connect with North Idaho College Administration. I will be attending March 4th president's cabinet meeting. ASNC Senator Richard Fortman and myself attended a Northwest Student Leadership Conference hosted by the Oregon Student Association this last weekend, February 21st through the 23rd, and it was one of the best conferences that I've been able to attend, so I'd just like to thank ASNC for being able to provide that opportunity for student leaders. I learned a lot about shared governance, a lot about how to organize student groups, information that can directly affect our clubs and bettering student involvement here on campus. Also, a project that I have been working on with our fellow student body presidents of higher education institutions in the state of Idaho has gained some ground recently. This project is forming an Idaho Student Association, and one has officially been And one has officially been formed. So I'd like to announce that to you. A newsletter is being finalized that will introduce the Student Association to all institution's constituency groups. So I look forward to being able to share that newsletter with you when it is finalized. And then also, the very last thing that I have is that ASNC is in favor of changing from the SWAC to the INWAC. And we passed a resolution yesterday, as Dr. Dunlap mentioned, when that agenda item was being discussed, and you should have a copy of that resolution. So that concludes my report. I don't have anything else for you. Thank you for listening. Do you have any questions or comments?
Any questions? Todd.
Beni, your folks, I've known them a long time. We all went to high school here, known you since you were a young boy, your family. I'm disappointed. Your indoctrination is clearly complete and you've become a pawn of the faculty and the staff and the administration. You decided three different positions, you fall right in line and then you took the shots at me. I'm sorry that you felt that I was unprofessional in the questions that I asked.
Any other comments or questions? Let me make a comment at this time. You know, there seems to be occasions when there are words spoken, maybe not in the tenor that we would like to hear them spoken, things said that we would like not to be said. But we all have to remember that freedom of speech is a very, very precious thing. And many times, we hear things and listen to things that we don't want to hear. And many times, we feel that somebody should be stopped from saying something that they want to say. And I can tell you that I think this board tries to maintain an open mind with regard to speech and understanding that there are many times that some anxieties are created. Having said that, the idea of moving forward with civility, with the right kind of language and approach to solving problems is something that this board addresses, quite frankly. To say that we don't fall out of step with that from time to time would be a mistake. But the board, quite frankly, I think treasures the concept of freedom of speech, even though it has some angst that goes along with it from time to time. So unless somebody else has any comments or questions, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you very much Chairman Howard.
Staff Assembly, Nancy Edwards.
Thank you Chairman Howard, Board of Trustees and President Dunlap. Good evening, everyone. I will keep my comments very brief. Mark Browning, the VP of Community Relations and Marketing, was our featured speaker at this month's staff assembly meeting. Mark gave us a legislative overview explaining how the community college budgets are determined, spoke about the presentation that Dr. Dunlap made to JFAC, and also updated us on the Senate Bill 1254, which had just been passed out of the Senate State of Affairs. Thanks, Mark, for making the time and taking that time out of your very busy schedule to come visit us. Last week, the proposed athletic conference change from SWAC to INWAC was shared with staff assembly and members were asked for their opinions. Their thoughts, opinions were then forwarded to our state or our staff senators for the college senate vote that took place on February 25th. And that is the end of my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much for your report. The next report is Faculty Assembly, Michelle Lippert.
Good evening Chairman Howard, trustees, President Dunlap, administrators and guests. The past month has been unusually busy for the faculty. On July 30th, we held a special meeting of the Assembly to discuss Senate Bill 1254. After a lively discussion, the Assembly voted to reaffirm our own NIC policy prohibiting guns on campus and to reject Senate Bill 1254. Following that, the Assembly passed a following resolution. The resolution affirmed my representation of the faculty as Chair of Faculty Assembly and the process by which I was elected. It states that the Assembly protests the tenure and diminuer in which certain statements and comments have been directed at constituent leaders, administrators and faculty at recent board meetings. We all have a common goal, that being the success of our students and the institution. Respectful dialogue that acknowledges differences is essential to that success. The Assembly requests that board members show respect for the faculty and the Faculty Assembly's elected representative. As you know, on February 22nd, there was the Board Tenure Workshop. I would like to thank our wonderful speakers, Norm Gissel, Molly Mashad and Dr. Karen Rupel. A big thank you goes out to their coaches, division chairs, Sherry Simkins and Dr. Carol Lindsay. More thanks to Dr. John Tomble, who chaired the Tenure Defense Committee. If you had seen the list of people on that committee, they were some of the strongest personalities on campus and I thought, "Poor John is going to be herding cats." I'd also like to send out a thank you to Dr. Randy Ware, who created the tenure survey. And a thank you to Board Chair Howard. Can we disagree about the format for the workshop? Yet in retrospect, I have to acknowledge your wisdom and that the format utilized was fair and just. Thank you for that. Our Assembly meeting on February 13th followed the passage of Senate Bill 1254 in the Senate. Subsequently, our entire meeting was given over to VP Grayden Stanley and Alex Harris, who addressed safety concerns. The possibility of a panic button being installed on every classroom and office computer was received enthusiastically. That concludes my report and I will stand for any questions that are applicable to my report.
Any questions? Michelle, thank you very much for your report. The next report is from the Senate, Audrey.
Good evening Chairman Howard, members of the board, President Dunlap. Tonight, I will share with you an update from the February Senate meeting. A second reading was, excuse me, a second reading was approved to revise the policy on admissions, faculty employment and the procedure on sabbatical leave. The revision to the policy on sabbatical leave was rejected. These documents will be forwarded to the President's Cabinet for review. We are in the process of reviewing the revision of policy and procedure, transfer for credit, tenure, program evaluation, grading, student withdrawals and textbook adoption. Senate will meet for a special session tomorrow so that we may complete our February agenda. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments? We're moving right along here, aren't we?
Yeah.
Thank you very much Audrey. The next report is from President Dunlap.
Chairman Howard, trustees and colleagues. In keeping with the athletic theme tonight, I want to encourage all of you, if you have an opportunity, to attend the Wrestling National Championships, which is being hosted by North Idaho College, unfortunately in Spokane. But that will be happening on Friday and Saturday. The wrestling begins at 9:30 a.m. on Friday and the championships are at 6:45 Saturday evening. And NIC had 10 athletes that qualified for the national championships. So congratulations to our wrestling team. I want to talk about some good things going on with the foundation as well as some good news out of JFAC. They both relate to funding. The Employee Campaign for Giving, which sponsors scholarships and grant programs, was a competition between our staff and faculty with Nancy and Michelle. And the participation rates were 70% by the staff, excuse me, 72% by the staff and 70% by faculty. And it came down to about the last day. Congratulations to both of you and thank you for participating in such good spirit with that. We also were notified by the Coeur d'Alene Tribe that they have provided us $10,000 in grant money. $5,000 of that will go to support our entrepreneurship program and $5,000 will go to support our American Indian Studies program. We also received $2,000 from the Idaho Humanities Council in support of our Cardinal Connections, which is, relates to stories of the Gathering Place Project. And we received $3,000 from Hecla Charities Foundation in support of Safety Fest. And is Marie Price still here?
She was.
Okay. Marie, out at our Workforce Training Center, put on the Safety Fest and there were 950 people that signed up for that. And so it was a tremendous effort. And Mike, if you would pass on the congratulations to Marie, I'd appreciate that. We also received $5,400 from the Idaho Community Foundation in support of NIC Professional Workshop scholarships for credit and non-credit students that are enhancing their career options at NIC. And then lastly, with regard to the foundation, we have Bon Appetit coming up on March 15th, which is a fundraiser that raises money for student scholarships and our grant program. Last year, between the amount raised at the Bon Appetit and the pledges, it was $48,000 that was contributed to those particular projects. And we're hoping that it will be even more successful this year. The JFAC just completed their appropriation for professional technical funding. And there's some good news in this. Their total increase for community college funding at the, well, not just community college, but at the career and technical funding level was 8.4%, whereas the governor's recommendation was 5.7%. Now, the majority of that ends up going to CWI to fund up their equalization. But there is some good news for us out of this as well. They funded up one FTE faculty member in our Aerospace Advanced Manufacturing Program and that's a $63,000 line item. We also received three line items totaling $53,500 for equipment that includes a lathe and shear plates. And another really good item of good news for our faculty and staff is that they approved a 2% change in employee compensation, which includes 1% to the base and 1% to be used for a one-time bonus. And so that's some good news for our employees. The community college budgets will be set on March 6th and the public schools, K-12 budget will be set on March 3rd. One last item, our faculty is having a faculty art show that is in the Boswell Corner Gallery and it will be from February 24th to March 28th. And I would encourage you to go over and take a look at that. We have some fabulous artists on our faculty and not just the faculty who teach art, but others as well. And if you haven't been in the Corner Gallery, it's a great little gallery where we bring in guest artists and this is an opportunity to feature our own faculty. And Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All right. Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is Information Items Legislative Update from Vice President Mark Browning.
Mr. Chairman, the members of the board, as materials are getting passed down there, I'll make this quick because we still have a chance to make 907, which is what my plan is. And there are candy bars. So you'll see in your update, a few of the education bills that are still making their way at various stages of progress throughout the legislative process. And as the President mentioned, the key two next steps in the appropriation process that we're keeping an eye on is, one, the public schools budget, which will take the lion's share of what available monies are there, is scheduled to be set on Monday. Once that rock is in the jar, we'll see how much room is left for the rest of the appropriation. So we'll be keep an eye on that. Towards the bottom of the page on the legislative update that you should have in front of you, you'll see there's been some talk this evening of Senate 1254. That was originally scheduled for a hearing tomorrow. Through a lot of effort of folks like myself across the state, we originally had that pushed till next Thursday, to the 6th, because of availability of folks to attend. Primarily, most of the institutions are at the State Board of Ed meeting in Boise State today and tomorrow. This afternoon, Chairman Tom Lurcher of the House State Affairs Committee changed the hearing time. It will now be this Friday, which is, I believe, the 28th at 8:00 in the morning. So we're scrambling around and we will be there to do that. The location's also been changed. It will not be in the Lincoln Auditorium, it'll be just in the regular hearing room. There'll be no pre-sign up for testimony, it'll be just whoever gets there to sign up that morning. And they do plan to take a vote on Friday morning. Other bills that are moving through that are of interest, I think, is, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Will that hearing be live streamed so folks can watch it from?
As always, yep. Either through legislation at the site or through public television. So you can get to those streams all the time, every day.
For that hearing, I wasn't sure about that one. Thank you.
The other one that I think is of interest to you is about halfway down the page, Senate Concurrent Resolution 139 calls for an interim committee for the study of technical education in the state. There's been a lot of work being done to try to get the funding formula set to where it's on a more equitable basis rather than by program, perhaps on a per-student and FTE basis. And there is a strong support to have that study take place in the off-season. Mr. Chairman, I think at that point, those are the highlights that we'd like to get and we'll obviously have an update for you. But at last report, the community college appropriation, as of today, at about 4:30, still seems to be intact.
Any questions on the report, on the legislative update? Any comments? Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is a one-year accreditation report. And Karen, thank you for presenting this to us.
Thank you Chairman Howard, trustees, President Dunlap and Mr. Lyons. I'll make this very short, since this is an FYI and it's late. As you know, we are under the new accreditation standards and we now report in a seven-year cycle. We just completed our year seven or full evaluation last spring, but we did it in a compressed three-year timeframe. And now we are blessed with starting over. So this is the year one report. It will carry us through a full cycle now, a full seven years. And this is basically answering standard one, which is, again, mission core themes and expectations. So the same as last time. And we did this all so close together that it's kind of seems that one report runs into the next. But now we're actually going to have seven years to complete. In addition to providing this year one report, and it's a new framework, we also have to answer recommendations. And the way that they are doing recommendations, and these are recommendations for improvements, they are asking us to answer those over an extended period of time. So depending upon the recommendation, it may go with a particular report. So this report has an update on recommendation two that we received just at the end of last year. So we've just had since July to address this recommendation in this report. But the recommendation was basically to reevaluate our core themes and measures and that's what we've done. You may recall that we had three core themes and those were closely aligned with our institutional values. values, and that seemed to cause confusion both internally with campus constituent groups and also with the evaluators. And so, one of the things we've done since July is we did a broad survey of the campus community, and in that, we decided that it was prudent to rename the core themes. So, you'll notice in this report, and my job over the next year and a half will be to educate the entire campus community on the names of these new core themes and what they represent. They're very closely aligned, but we came up with three new core themes, and so those are reflected in the report. Student access and achievement, effective teaching and learning, and commitment to community. And we also spent a lot of months here, the last few months, working across campus with different groups to revise the measures, so you'll notice that the measures are markedly different from the first report. We tried to really focus on outcomes, so one of the things that they had requested was that we aligned with specific outcomes, the measures with outcomes, not with just, just with broad objectives. So, we also used the five institutional values, and those were the three previous core themes, along with stewardship and diversity, and we have interwoven objectives for those five institutional values into each of the three core themes. And then the last thing that we did to change the report slightly is we are providing more baseline data, and that baseline data, we provided as much as we could where we have that information available, and then over the next couple of years, we will work on creating baselines as we're able to accumulate three years of data. And that's really essentially it, the year one report, and I welcome questions. It's late. If they're involved questions, I would encourage you, because I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, I would encourage you to direct those to President Dunlap, and he can forward those to me, and I would spend time reviewing. If you have any quick questions now for understanding, I'm happy to answer those too.
Any questions? Any quick questions?
You did a nice job.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
The next agenda item is the Board Chair Report, and this will be very short. I always hate going behind the President because he always steals all the things I want to talk about.
Sorry.
There's nothing left for me to talk about.
The meeting of the Community College Consortium
Ah, I've got that down here.
March 12th.
Right. Thank you. You already took my, my item away from me. We're having a meeting of the Idaho Community College Consortium on March the 12th, and that concludes my report. All right. We're down to remarks for the good of the order. Any remarks for the good of the order? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you all.